Alright, uh, we need to be comfortable. Uh, so before, uh, tonight, what I want to jump into is the main 2018 dashboard, which you should have a copy of that in front of you. Couple of some of the highlights to point out. Uh, number one, the Arrow, uh, is your community application exceeding? Uh, if we continue, uh, we're having a really good, um, key indicators, sales cap, about a hundred thousand dollars over more than what we had last year. That continues at Arrow's going on, starting moving up because our revenues are showing coming stronger through the first half of the year. So, uh, so that was really good signs. The other indicator, uh, that you can look on there is the total revenue versus total expenses. The reason why there's such a gap between them is that we got property taxes in May. Um, and so that one number will close on the gap until we get more property tax in November. And there's three, but, uh, so far, all the indicators is that, uh, we are having just as successful a year as we did last year, uh, from revenues standpoint. And it's auto RV construction. Uh, we do have a, uh, a little middle school, you know, that's potentially being built, so that could be another influx of revenue depending on when they start. The other, uh, in the first graph, we also point out the permit revenue year to date is two hundred and thirty-five thousand, which is very, uh, okay, strong. Um, last couple of years, we've also had very strong years depending on permits, revenue came in. But the budget we, we proposed for 2018 was four hundred and fifty thousand, so we're already over the halfway mark through five months of the year. Uh, last year, we collected a total of about seven hundred and thirty-seven thousand in permit revenue, so we expect to, uh, that that should be close to achievable if we're in that, uh, or so, so we're not in that range. On the expense, um, side, uh, one thing I do want to note, the, uh, total budget is nine point seven million. That does include one point three million dollars for trailhead irrigation if we were moving forward with that. That budget number is under, that's why there's such a large discrepancy. The one thing that we're only thirty percent spent through the year, there's actually one big tick added that, that charged that number up. The seed projects, um, I do want to point out, we did the budget for Orchard Park. You know, Orchard Park is sort of a reserve park, paid demand on here, and it's at three, a little over three million. Where originally, um, first few dashboard reports, I was at two and a half million dollars. Um, and you see what we have spent to date, uh, for Orchard Park. The, um, other item I want to point out, highlight is down at the bottom, on the strategic planning, community engagement. Uh, we haven't spent any improvement services there, but I do want to point out that we have, there has been stat time spent on it. So, that number doesn't show up in this slide, but that there has a work that Lisa's done, that we have been meeting for the last few months. I was trying to reflect, there is work being done on strategic planning. Any questions on the dashboard?
Uh, timeframe, how are we looking at the signal?
So Dennis is here to correct me if I don't have it right, but there's, because of the lead time, we've already awarded the contract, we're expecting August, September, the signal to arrive. I think it's only about a week or two project, if Dennis has been in here right now, but we're looking at August, September. This, this contract's been awarded and the signal's been ordered, so it's just a matter of receiving the deliverables and installing it.
And that's signal for what?
It's a traffic signal.
At signal, okay. Has anything else been dreamed up yet about, um, Legacy Ridge and, what's that, Country Vista?
The intersection? So, it's on what we call our watch list, so we continue to look at that intersection. We continue to look at the intersection of Country Vista and Henry. We continue to look at Mission and Country Vista right down here by Trailhead and the Water District. Uh, there's a few other intersections that we're watching. We have traffic counts, and when those traffic counts get to a certain level, right now, we know our, and I don't know off the top of my head, council member, but, um, when they get to a D or an F, then you'll see them moving forward in our capital facilities plan. I'll, I'll mention a couple of things just kind of in passing, between our Harvard Road Mitigation Fund and then those projects that are over on the other side of I-90, um, we would look for those funding, but the other thing is, our, our revenues do help us leverage outside money, so that would be something we put forward.
Thank you.
With all the expected traffic counts, why do we leave for a J coming D or an F? We don't have to, correct?
Correct, yeah, you don't have to.
I mean, if, if, if a logical person sat there and watched that area of Legacy Ridge and Country Vista, and at any given busy hour, and just watched traffic try to get in and out of there, he would tell you that it's on that safe area. That traffic count tells me how many cars, it doesn't tell me how risky that area is.
So, let me say, the industry, which is the professionals that do traffic studies and, and approve funding for traffic improvements at intersections, it's very, I'll say, very prescriptive, and everything we do has to match warrants, and if you put in something that doesn't, isn't triggered by warrants or justification, then you're liable as a city. So it's very important that when we do put in a traffic controlled intersection, that we meet all the warrants. Now, that's kind of the bureaucratic technical answer. I'll tell you also, it's not just the traffic counts, it's the wait time, and it's also the crash history. So we have to take the numbers, the, um, I'll, I call it the efficiency of the intersection and the crashes, and then that helps us prioritize which intersections have to go next. Um, I don't have it right on the tip of my tongue tonight, but I'll work with Dennis so that when we do the update next council meeting on Public Works, that we can address those questions. But, no, it's a good point, it's not, why does it have to fail before you fix it? That's a good.
Well, I guess, and I guess knowing that we're putting a traffic crossing in there, and it's where it basically is there, um, and knowing that that's going to raise more risk factors for somebody trying to cross and not breaking into traffic, um, I don't know, I think that would justify it sooner than later in my mind. I said it all the time, what I'm doing, police work is volunteering. I see the traffic and I see the people trying to get in, I'll see people racing through there forty-five miles an hour, and thirty-five, and, you know, I think law enforcement does absolutely best that they can to mitigate those risks, but...
As we go as a city, those peak periods, left-hand turns onto arterials from a non-signalized intersection, I'm going to get tougher. And, you know, there's times of the day where you shoot a cannon down Appleway, nobody's there, and then other times of the day, yeah. So, I appreciate what you're saying, I just want to make sure that when we prioritize our traffic needs, we do it based on the data and the, and the requirements for not putting the city at risk, for putting an intersection improvement that, um, couldn't be warranted, so...
I guess with the traffic study we did, they did put that as an area concern?
They did, yes.
And it, they, so that would help justify it as well?
Correct, and I think once it gets to a trip level, once it gets, um, I don't, like I said, I don't have the numbers in front of me, but once the trips that are generated get to a certain point, then we know we need to do a traffic impro, an intersection improvement.
Yeah, so with questions since we're on that topic, so with Indiana scheduled to be completed later this year, where on our watch list is Indiana? My concern is people, sorry, older population trying to turn left out of Turtina, not go Harvard.
So there's a signal identified, it's requirement of the, of the developer, it's a Harvard Road and a Tip and Lift improved project, so it's right on everybody's radar, yeah. And then also, kind of in that, in passing, June nineteenth, our next council meeting, Dennis and I, we're going to have a public hearing on our transportation, um, capital improvement plan, and so all of the, the intersections we're talking about are in that plan, and then you can see the timeline where we're planning for those improvements.
The cars coming in?
I probably won't make that meeting, but, uh, I did have someone at the farmer's market on Saturday, mentioned to me that they have a lot of difficulty riding their bike and coming over the, over the bridge and their Harvard Road and Mission.
Can you turn your microphone, council member Moore, I'm sorry, is it on?
Yeah.
Okay.
Someone at the farmer's market on Saturday, say, when they're riding their bike across the bridge in Mission and Harvard, that it's very difficult for them to go across there and get back on the, the trail. And, um, we looked at that the other day, and the only thing that is there is just a pedestrian yield sign, just a pedestrian sign, no yield sign there. Uh, so I'd appreciate it if you take a look at it, just, I don't, I don't think there's a, an area for a crosswalk, I, I think there's a, there's a late brick there, right at that crossing.
Yeah, I, I'm not familiar with this, I'll have to go out and Dennis and I can go out and look at that, so that's as you go over the pedestrian bridge and...
Going north.
No, north.
Oh, going north.
Going north and then crossing there by the roundabout.
Okay.
Where Two Legend is, that corner there.
And I think there's probably a possibility for kind of confusion too, because you're on the trail and all you see is sidewalk for a while, so I think people trying to figure out where the trail is going north, you know, it's, it's kind of, if you're not familiar with the area, it's kind of unclear where to go, uh, if you're trying to go, go north on the trail, sign up that warrants a little sign or something, but...
We can look at it, see if there's something we can do.
Real quick on the signal thing, so, for the trip count, so Madison actually triggered more, I'd be curious on that.
Correct, so when we did the traffic study in sixteen, um, the, the next two intersections that required improvements based on counts and accident records were Signal, which we're doing, and then Madison was the second one. Then it's real close, and I, I, I don't want to speculate, Shane, but I think it was a toss-up between the, I was surprised, because I would have thought that Mission and Appleway right here by City Hall would have been at or above that.
I didn't think so, too.
It wasn't, uh, and then Legacy. So those are kind of the, the sequence of intersection improvements we're going to have to make. So I think, you know, we have a good plan, and I think that every year we try to get a, a major project underway and completing.
Sorry, we'll be around a little bit.
Can you, real quick, while we're on the topic, Billy, that crossing by the roundabout, um, by True Legend, but you, you and I talked, and it was Andrew McCoy left, we're talking to somebody, um, I brought up some concern about the exact same pedestrian cyclist. I'm a commuter that, that hits that roundabout every day on my way, and as you're coming around it, especially in the afternoon of the summer, it is difficult to pay attention to your cars on the left and a pedestrian in front of you at the same time. So one of the things I was bringing up was the opportunity to maybe put us, um, one of the flashy weekends a little bit further, I guess it'd be, um, further west on Mission, um, but I just don't know, not being an engineer, I'm not sure where you'd put it. It sounded like you wouldn't put it right at the roundabout, but there's no real obvious intersection, but we also see a lot of people running across the street or turning between where Heyjays is and True Legend is, and there's a lot of people that cross right there, sort of like, yeah.
So, I've gone to a couple of roundabouts.
Yeah, a lot of people walking, you know?
Yeah, kind of the, the thinking on roundabout designs have changed and it's evolved, in fact, it's kind of, tomorrow night, uh, there's a roundabout, um, workshop for elected officials at Center Place, if you have the time, but if you don't, I understand. Um, I think if you are one of those professional cyclists, you act like a car, and you just go around the roundabout like a car, but if you're a family with toddlers, you're not going to do that. And what I, what I think works the best is to take your pedestrian, um, folks and your bicyclist folks and remove them from, move them out of the throat. Get them away, so that you're not having to look at the left car and the pedestrian at the same time, that they're crossing, some more similar to what they do on Mission and Moulter.
But that's even, that's even in the she, watching pedestrians running, though, as you're looking left for cars, and, because I've seen...
So I went out there and walked it a lot, and I, I got complaints a lot, I went out and walked it with people, I walked it myself at night. I'll tell you, I think that a conscientious pedestrian can, can get through those intersections fairly well.
Unfortunately, ten-year-olds aren't that conscientious.
So I cross that, I, I cross that at least four times a day, walk with them from work, and I would say ninety-eight to ninety-nine percent of the time, people stop for me. Now, I, growing up in a college town where we walked everywhere, I'm a little bit older than some people, um, but I make sure, you know, make eye contact, and I also carry a flashlight, blind people, and I cross it from dark. But, um, so I would say, you know, in general, and I cross right, right as our days go into Comcast and when they're hitting out at night, and they're, again, ten-year-olds, totally different, but the reason for me, um, more than, more than the majority of the time.
So roundabouts are becoming more, um, commonly used throughout this region. Um, everyone has their own opinion, I know our departments have their opinion of them, school bus drivers, so on and so forth, and maybe as we grow as a community with more roundabouts, people will become more knowledgeable, but I just think that the pulling the pedestrian away from the circle is the best way, and if there's something we can do at the Mission and Harvard Road line, kind of address what you were saying, council member receivers, I'll have to go out and look at it. I have to be honest, I don't, I haven't crossed that one on foot for a while.
And I'm just wondering if there's not, because of flashing beacons or something, it makes awfully obvious when somebody's crossing, something like that.
So, can you kind of line this with that? One of the things we're bringing back on June nineteenth is an update to the lift, tip resolution, or the improved project list. So you had a question about Indiana and Harvard, and I should be updated, we also need to update Orchard Park, um, on that list as well, so we'll go through that. Would it be helpful to council on that night if we did kind of a summary high-level of what the tip lift is at, and what the balances are?
Yes, sure.
Yeah, sure.
So on the nineteenth, as part of that resolution, we'll, we'll kind of high-level what the balances are, how Orchard Park is impacted in that process. Internally, in one, like you know, here, so a couple of months ago, Public Works did the, uh, software purchase for la, not labor tracking, but for asset tracking on their items. We have also an online time sheet, software that we're looking to purchase, it's three thousand dollars, and it's called Attendance On Demand. So it's an online, um, so employees now, right now, we have to do Excel spreadsheets, it's a little bit tedious, and we want to do something more real-time on the market, and, and something we can get downloaded into our payroll system. So, we think this is a good solution, we're going to have a police department ask for this as well, uh, so that they can log in without filling out these time sheets, and we're hoping that will save, um, especially our city treasurer some time and headaches. So it's at three thousand dollars. The second component of that is to integrate it with our software, our financial software, and that's another thirty-six hundred dollars, so they're really two separate items. I guess I'll look at the council if that is acceptable, or if because it is related, that we want to see that mentioned up. Two different companies, but I honestly don't like your word of that.
Better or worse for staff? I hear you're a city treasurer, but from an individual person, is it easier for them day in, day out, too?
It, yes, so the old idea, so they can either do it from a computer terminal to log in, or they can do it from their own phone. Now, the interesting thing is, depending on what generation you're part of, you might want to say, well, if they're going to make me do it on my phone, I want to see some kind of, you know, help, and I can just, oh, just go on and run to the computer. Um, but, the other generations would expect that, because it's a free app, you just download it, you click in, and you come in. We set the schedule, we set the parameters of what, how people schedule their work.
Is it PD-based, Windows-based software?
Both, Windows and, well, uh, you can use it, you can use it with either Android or iPhone, so it's technology.
How bad that plan?
What?
How bad that plan?
Except on, we'll just go back to our old system.
Well, it doesn't really cuts down on the change per hour, just...
Yeah.
It does, it, yes. So, one of the things that we would, will probably expect is we'll miss, employees will miss punches and not clock incorrectly, and the supervisor will have certain rights to them, clock them, and, we would hope that, its supervisor especially, will be reviewing this on a weekly basis and correct everything on a weekly, and then waiting till it's something paid once a month, then try to do this slamming wall system for every single month. Um, yeah, the accuracy should be, uh, uh, I mean, it should, it's a computer system, should do a lot of calculations while, it doesn't need any manual concerns on that side. One of the things that we'll have to work through is that we do pay on the last day of the month, so we have kind of this little window of having to project hours, so we'll have to kind of think about that and what, how we're going to do that. So there might be some changes that we need to make, thanks to some of those. And then the other nice thing is, uh, employees with the attendance on demand, they'll be able to see on there what, how much, if they're full-time, how much vacation, well, and actually, all employees will be, how much sick they had or who, you know, some portions. In the packets tonight, there's a conference quote for the sound system in here, are there any questions regarding that? Can you see the table we have over there?
The heights are adjustable.
Oh, I see.
They're work benches.
Wonderful.
Yeah, they're only three hundred dollars and they hold three thousand pounds, so...
And, and we're going to be able to reuse our skirts?
Yes, yes. The, the skirts are going to end up on those, so, they won't go anywhere, they're very heavy, but the heights are adjustable, so they'll be, we'll put them down to this height.
Yeah, yeah, I'd like to be able to see over the top of the table, thank you. I do have one question you, Henry, that was asked before, and I think you addressed it, I don't recall. Did, did we talk to them anticipating, will we ever move this wall out and expand this room? That this system is expandable, that we can utilize that?
Yeah, that's a gamble. Yeah, I'll, and so the, the only question will be coming when it comes to the wiring, so if we, everything's going to be wired on this side, but if we expand the wall, then we might have to do wiring, but...
Right.
Every, every, all components can move, it's going to be the wireless mics, the wires you have running on your desk, or they'll go away, and those tables will be, we'll be able to form them any way we want. These tables right now, because of how we've got the system set up, we can't do anything real quick. So, it'll be in kind of an V shape with a table in the middle for all of these staff.
My assumption is, although, you've had, you had discussed with them, the possibility with this room, if we ever expand it?
Correct.
Great, thank you.
The other agenda on there is if you get any questions about the office, here is our HR specialist, and if you had a chance to meet Rory at the barbecue, thank you, at the barbecue a couple weeks ago, uh, he's been in helping us with recruiting, uh, we have a library director position out there, um, it's been beneficial since he's actually been doing some screening, some pre-screening for us, kind of, we've had this point in time, we'll have to sit down with a bunch of applications to try to look through, at least, he's going to do some background, um, one-on-one, call it, and then we're going to talk, um, about the planning director, so flyer him out, kind of, about the planning and engineering director, to tell you if that's, if there is any change in that, we'll start recruiting for that one tomorrow. So if there's no questions, I, I projected about fourteen weeks, which is us through sometime in August, and my, my goal would be at that point, or somewhere between, to analyze, to see if that's enough time that we need or resources, or if we need less. We should start looking at first hand, and then they could...
All right.
Any questions?
Library.
Oh, sorry, I don't have our newspapers, so I'm just kidding. So, is that, or is it... So, I'm going to talk to you guys about summer reading, it is my most favorite time of the year, so, sorry if I start talking fast, because I'm just like really excited about it. So, our summer reading program starts in two weeks, it starts the Monday after school gets out, and then it goes through August eleventh, and our theme is libraries rock. We're doing, for our reading portion of summer reading, we have two options for the parents, the kids can log their minutes online, we have an online system that we have partnered with, with Spokane Public Library System and Spokane County Library System. So the website itself is called northwestreads.org. We figure with everybody's advertising budgets, we can reach a lot more this way. Um, so the software is with the Great Reading Adventure, it's open source, so it's free, um, but all the parents have to do is they can create one account and go on and log all their different kids' minutes. If the kids are old enough where they can, you know, do it themselves, which, I mean, nowadays, pretty young kids can do it themselves, um, they also have different challenges and badges that they can do, um, so they do the different challenges, they attend library events, they help in the community, and they earn different badges throughout the summer. So that's our online system, depending on their age determines how many minutes they have to read, and then they can come into the library and earn three different prizes for their reading over the summer. Now, we're going to talk about some of the events, this is my favorite part of summer reading, is we have the reading portion, and then we have the events. Hopefully, with the events, the kids will come, they'll do a fun activity, they're at the library, they'll grab a book on their way out, and so that will, kind of like, they go hand in hand, hand in hand. So one of my most favorite activities that we're doing, I started last year, is Totally Untidy Toddlers. I brought pictures this year, because I've told you guys about it in the past. So it's a messy sensory playtime that we do outside. My favorite is up here in the front, the top, is our rainbow spaghetti pool. I fill a whole kiddie pool with about twenty pounds of colored cooked spaghetti, and the kids, I mean, it's just color, but they go nuts, they freak out, they love it so much. Um, and so then we have different digging stations, different finger painting, lots of different fun. Um, our theme for this June one is bubbles, so I'm going to have lots of those big huge, you know, holes with like the huge bubbles where you can make them, they advertise, they can make bubbles as big as themselves. So I'm really excited about that, that's what we're going to do. These are pictures from last year, I did it in June, and then I did it in August, and both times we had over a hundred and twenty people attend, so it was pretty big attendance, and the thing I love about this is this is, you know, we post this on Facebook, and the parents see it, and they're like, oh, cool, this is this giant playtime that I can bring my kid to. But afterwards, they, it's like they come back for more, they're trying to see what else is happening at the library. So before I started doing this, my baby storytime was like really small, and now I consistently get about twenty parents and kids each week at it, which is pretty good for baby time. So this is just some more pictures from stuff that we did in August at our baby time. So that's, we're going to, that's going to be one of our opening activities on, on June nineteenth. I think I have, do you guys have a calendar in your bucket? That came with the bucket? Okay, I'll get you one, you guys. So, I have a calendar that I put out with all the different activities.
Jamie, you can get, or Dennis, maybe if we can get someone to put in the bucket for Saturday, except for great...
Yeah.
Yeah. Oh, are you guys going to be at the city council? Or, sorry, the farmer's market, okay? Yeah, I'm working in like a hundred dollars, so, I'll be there. So I'll have those for you guys. The other one I talked, I wanted to talk about is, we're doing blanket forts in the library as part of a camping storytime, so we're going to have storytime, read a bunch of camp, camping books, play, play a bunch of outdoor games, and then they're going to go into the library, and they're going to build forts, and then they can read books and play games in their forts. So it's just kind of like reminding people that you don't have to just hold your arms and be quiet in the library, we can run around and build forts and stuff, so, the kids love it, it's really fun. The Friends of the Library are sponsoring two, um, out, performances outdoors in the Pavilion Park. So we have Charlie Williams, the noise guy, who's the silly sound effects guy, that's going to come do a kid's show to open summer reading in June, and then in August, we have a folk singer with giant puppets that's coming to do, um, it's called, um, Red Yarns Old Farm. So he's coming and he's doing a big folk music show in the library, I'm sorry, at Pavilion Park. So The Friends are being awesome and sponsoring those events for us this summer. Since the theme is music, I'm working with, um, Janaya Christiansen, she's a music therapist that just moved here from Seattle, and she's going to do a musical petting zoo for us at the library, and not only is she bringing like more regular instruments, you know, violins, guitars, stuff that they sing, she also has, um, African and Spanish instruments that she's going to bring, and the kids get to play them and touch them and see how they work, so I'm really excited about that, because I personally haven't seen very many African instruments, so that'll be really cool, um, as well. The last one is Touch a Truck. Last year, we had over five hundred people that attended it, I'm hoping we'll get some more this year. So it's going to be in Town Square on January, June twenty-ninth, from ten-thirty to noon. I've been coordinating with Jen in the Parks Department, so the city crew's going to bring a bunch of their equipment, we have the garbage truck that's coming, police car, it's coming, I'm hoping, I've been booking in Vista, I'm hoping to be able to get them to bring one of their, like, bucket trucks, because I think that would be really cool, and then we have a diesel engine coming also, the fire truck, I'm hoping to get the police, sorry, the post office there as well, and have a mail truck. So, I'm really excited, I hope you guys will come, yeah. Because the kids are going to go next. I just have some fun pictures from last year with some of the different vehicles and the cages that, um, oh, the goats are going to come also, so now we'll have a couple little animal petting zoos as well. So that's everything that I have for June, um, though, I just wanted to mention one other thing, last year during the summer, we did a code club, and I've been doing that for about a year and a half now. This year during the summer, we're going to do a chess club at the library. There's a lot of recent... There's a lot of research that talks about how much, how great chess is for kids' brains. And, so I'm really excited to do that again. I've just, I've been getting several replies from parents over the last year. And I don't play chess, so I was like, that's a great idea, but I need to find someone that plays chess. So, I have found someone, I'm looking to be doing a chess club this month. Sorry, I talk really fast, is there any questions?
No, not a question, it's much of a comment. Just credit to you and what you've done with these programs. People can have talent, and I think we've done so far. But the passion is what takes it to the next level. And I've been to your events, and they've been tremendous. And just the outpour of community involvement has been amazing. So, thank you for that, it's been great to watch.
I just have a comment too. My, my wife and I attended a session to learn how to use the Overdrive software and download online to Kindle. And I think it's, it's very slick the way that works.
It is.
Unfortunately, it wasn't very well attended, it's just my wife and I had that session, but we're happy that we learned how to do it.
Yeah, we've started doing a bring your own device, two Tuesdays a month, where they can come in, bring whatever they have, their phone or their computer. And they'll sit, we'll sit down with them for an hour and help them figure out what they need, so, yeah.
I'll help, thank you.
All right, public safety.
Can I bury gifts?
Good luck following that passion that you have.
I know. I'm too close to the very much. There's three different documents, so just take, take one out of each. Okay, what's being handed out is some current statistic information. The, there's three different documents here, you're getting one. As they come around, it looks like this, it's very colorful. The first several pages is the two thousand seventeen preliminary report from the crimes in Washington. It gets submitted to the Waspic and FBI, and they submit this report. So, feel free to look at that, there's lots of information, lots of numbers on there. Two pages to it, some graphs, some charts, but this is all two thousand seventeen data. Really, what I'm gonna point out about that, unless you have specific questions, has to do with the crime rate. And so if you look at the fourth column, where it says crime rate per one thousand. A lot of times people will ask about, you know, what's the crime rate in your city? We get people that are interested in moving to Liberty Lake, and they ask, what's your crime rate? And so it's kind of a tough question to answer unless you have all this data. And so, the, our crime rate, the number of crimes we have per one thousand people in two thousand seventeen was thirty point two. So, what does that mean exactly? Well, we have thirty point two crimes per one thousand people that live in our city. So, I pulled the other jurisdictions within Spokane County, just for comparison purposes for two thousand seventeen. So, same dataset basically. So, if you're interested, I would, I'm just gonna share this really quick. So, Spokane County Sheriff's Office crime rate for two thousand seventeen is fifty-three point eight crimes per thousand. Area Heights Police Department is sixty-two point nine crimes per thousand. G D T is sixty, is fifty-three point two crimes per thousand. Spokane Police Department's a hundred and sixty-seven point seven crimes per thousand. Spokane Dolly Police Department is a hundred and five, and Liberty Lake is at thirty point two. So, out of all the jurisdictions within our county, we are doing very well. So, that's just what I want to point out with that. Feel free to look at it, if you have questions, let me know. The second document, or one of the documents we have, is just called the Crime Clock. This comes from that same report. This is based on statewide statistics from two thousand seventeen. It's just, I wouldn't call them fun facts, but they're really not that fun, because it talks about murder, rape, and assaults, and all that kind of thing. But it just goes statewide about your crime clock, about how many offenses occur every so many minutes. So, that's just for you to, to take a look at. Maybe win a trivia night or something with that information. Last document that I have has been requested by some of the council members, so Chris specifically. It's kind of our blotter, if you will. So, this is our last two weeks of May, of some things that have happened. So, feel free to look at this, if there's specific questions about any events on here, again, please let me know. If you find that this is not useful to you, please let me know, because this, this is a lot of work to do. The other information that I provided to you, something very easily produced through our New World system. This, we have to go through every single report, through the synopsis, you know, break the word, one sentence out of a three-page report. So, there's no, no way to automatically generate that, so it's time-consuming. But if it's valuable to you, we will try to continue to do so. With that, one of the things I got, probably six or seven phone calls on, it's in, it's this year, was we were involved in a high-speed car pursuit. It came through our, our city, it ended up going through Liberty Lake Road. Person ended up leaving their car on foot, forced to lake. But there was, I think there was probably ten plus patrol cars involved in that pursuit. Started off on Trent with state patrol, picked up valley cars, picked up county cars, came to Liberty, picked up Liberty Lake cars. So, the good news is that person was located by K nine, and I think it was a custody. But I received, I don't know how many texts on my cellphone about what's going on in Liberty Lake. Train, cars flying down the road. Anyways, just a few other things to talk about, other than those kinds of questions. One of the things that we have going on is our Spocom, which is what we're calling our Combined Communications Project. Continue to move forward. We have now established our Board of Directors, we have established bylaws. Matter of fact, you're lucky enough today to have the chairman of that board and the vice chairman of that board sitting right here in front of you. And so we continue to move forward with that, that project. Still a lot of work to be done. Our goal is to have this live by the second, I think I said quarter one last time we reported. We've pushed that back a little bit. But by quarter two, end of quarter two, two thousand nineteen, we anticipate this project being, going live. So, that's a lot of work, a lot of issues we're working through, but I'm confident we'll be successful making that happen. Just some days to remember, last day of school is the fifteenth. I'm not happy about that, so. Our new patrol vehicle has, has arrived and was placed in service yesterday. It's been assigned to Sergeant Darren Worging. Our USA Games, which is our Special Olympics event, that starts off here in Liberty Lake, and then we run the torch across the state to the opening ceremonies. Husky Stadium, that is June twenty-seventh here in Liberty Lake. I think our start time is eight o'clock in the morning at the William Park with the torch lighting, some speeches. And then the team of athletes will be running from William Park to Safeway, which is one of the corporate sponsors. And then they'll board the bus and head off to their next location. So, please, please join us, I'll send out a reminder to all of you about that. Another thing I'm really looking forward to is the garage sale weekend, June twenty-second to twenty-third. We will have four extra officers working that day, our reserve officers will be working. Interesting enough, I sent, I saw an email that came from Jen, actually, to our officers about, yeah, we can have some carts available for you guys to use. I'm like, hey, what about our cool bicycles that we have? And I was reminded about the aging population of our police departments. We do have, we do have a officer that's just getting back off light duty, he's one of our bike officers, and we didn't want to risk him having an issue on his bike with falling off. And he's been off for six months, we don't want him to get hurt again. So, we will have two officers on bicycles, we'll have two officers patrolling around in some carts, and then we'll have our two regular day shift patrol officers working under care. Last thing I really have to share is our, some of our day shift officers, our sergeants myself, will be touring North Pines Middle School on Thursday. The reason why we're doing this is because it's the exact same floor plan that the new middle school here in Liberty Lake is being designed after. So, we just wanna kind of give an idea of what that floor plan's gonna look like as far as, because we know it's gonna be a two-story building. So, get an idea of working on response plans and how to respond in the event of a crisis there. So, we'll be doing that on Thursday. With that, I'll answer any questions you want.
I have one reference too, even the issue we had with the boat and the traders down here in the side street, the adults are still there, as of a few days ago I drove through. And now I noticed one of the traders, this has always been the black one, the license expired on it, so.
So, all of those issues are complaint-driven. Last time council brought some of the issues on Homestead to our attention, we went and removed all those vehicles. So, I will take that as another complaint, and we will move forward. Chief.
Okay, thank you.
Who used to get this report online monthly? For some reason, we don't get that online anymore?
The, yes, because it's difficult to produce as well. And so we just now started redoing that, and this is the first time we've done this in probably a year. And it's just because it is, it takes a lot of staff time to prepare that.
The other question I had was that, I saw somewhere where you're working on surveillance cameras for the park plan?
Yes.
Are you, are you working on developing an overall surveillance program for all the facilities of the city? Or are we just concentrating on the parks?
Well, we do have an overall plan where we are putting cameras throughout the city at strategic locations. So, currently, we do have them at all of the parks. We will have one at Orchard Park when that is online. And then we have a couple other cameras and not at parks. And we also have, we, we, I have a plan of other locations that we'd like to place cameras in the city.
Chief, you mentioned that you're gonna go view the other school because it's the same layout as this one, et cetera. I remember several months back, we were talking at one of the public safety meetings, and you indicated that you weren't necessarily getting the level of response that you thought you would get from the schools regarding that over at Liberty Lake. Can you tell us, is there any update on that now, or we, do you expect to find the same thing at the new school?
So, our, so our experience at Liberty Lake and Liberty Creek has, has been better. They have done several lockdown, lockout drills, that they've invited us to each one of those, to provide feedback and observation. So, that's been very good, and we expect that to continue with the rest.
Excellent, thank you.
I think this report's pretty valuable, but knowing how complex our system is in the police department, how would you say this to our visiting?
So, I got printed out about five forty-five, so there's errors in it, because I've just edited. So, I, what I've done is I've had Saki start working on that. And so, you know, basically all that information is coming from the officers' briefings that they provide. So, it, you know, it comes in one day at a time, and.
We're talking for a couple hours.
Oh, oh, yeah.
Yeah, I guess what I, I know when we used to get it, you know, it's really useful, when people would ask about certain things, you know, that are going on around town. So, we could be a little bit knowledgeable as to the things that the authorities need to respond to. But, you know, at the expense of doing it hours and hours.
We, I think it's very valuable as well, and it's something that the media's been asking for. So, we will continue to provide it as time allows.
I guess if the system improves and it can be streamlined, it would be great, but a huge priority if it came to that.
I was gonna mirror those comments, I say is that I find this interesting and fascinating, but still, it takes a lot of your time, which could be spent more effectively somewhere else. I certainly support doing it somewhere else versus this. And then maybe on a quarterly basis or something like that, maybe something like this could be compiled, if I'd appreciate it. Same that will happen, we'll forget it by then. So, it won't become an issue.
We will continue to try to provide.
I guess, as a curiosity, chief, some that may take a lot less time to just be, it seems like there's the exact same sort of offenses, whether it's a welfare check or DUI, or just reading off the first couple of them. If you just put the number of those that happened each week or month or hour.
That's a fucking, that's a fucking years.
Yep, I agree, if that's what you said, I'll, yeah, without any detail, because we're running out of time. Last week, we had two keepers and five arrests, or whatever, is that, is that somewhere else that I'm not?
So, so in part of this.
Part of the southern detail that you said up there.
So, part, yeah, so part of this report, I've just taken out, it's like a couple, number of calls for service we had for the month, and number of arrests that we've had, number of citations that are issued. So, if you want, so what you're asking for is very simple, is very easy to figure out for us. Of course, all I need to know, all I need to know is what, because if I print out everything that we responded to in a month, it's, it's pages and pages. If it's just certain things that you're interested in, then I can narrow my, my report to that. If you wanna know what everything we responded to in the month, as far as, you know, if you have many DUIs, many suspicious people, and this may be property access. If you want all that information, that's a push of a button, and I can compile that. But it's gonna have, it's gonna be two or three pages, so.
I'm just kind of brainstorming, I guess more, that's more the data, I'm fine with everybody, I love getting this report, and I'm, oh, that's what's going on there. We should be talking about it maybe about here, but it's a lot of staff hours, the data that, you know, we count there a lot of DUIs, maybe we do think. And that's more what you're thinking about, but it's good info for us.
Yeah, we'll, we'll try our best to continue.
One of the things I see in the report is, is there some ideas to what areas of town were having problems? And whether or not any of the crimes in my neighborhood, or somebody else's neighborhood.
I think it would be in somebody's.
I think that's one of the stages of knowing even more deep better.
Well, we do have the crime map that I've provided the last couple of times, that does have those hotspots, as to where they're located.
If you're going to summarize it.
So, I, I really just need, you know, I'm hearing lots of things, so I just need, really need clarification as to what you'd like. I can generate almost anything that you want to see, I just need to know what that is.
Well, give us two weeks to brainstorm individually, and you can kind of figure out what, what Lori was asking. I'll have to basically in the next meeting.
I think the information that we can get that really helps us do our job is invaluable information just to entertain us.
Yeah, that's not.
I mean, fortunately, I have a little more insight to what went on, but this report here that has the stats on the breakdown of calls, plus that map, is gonna tell us a lot of information on what happens, so I think that's, from my perspective, just giving you a lot of good detail.
Chief, can you produce this on a monthly basis?
That, that's a, that's not my report.
This is not.
So, that's the state, state of Washington, crime in Washington.
But this stuff is yours.
That's.
That's yours, okay.
And this is the, the calls for service, western calls, you know, arrests, things like that.
And I think the, the hotspot map you're talking about is really useful, because when we had people complaining about, hey, let's do this, and, you know, this area does that. We've got some of the fallback on, just with a quick visual, so, it makes it really fun. This is what we know, and if you want more information, we're eight hundred to chief.
Maybe that's direct, so.
I will cut that out.
Of course, be sure to supply your address. That's what I need to thank.
Deal box.
Thank you, chief.
Thank you. So, two documents coming around. One is, maybe you were just referencing on Brian's work, a very similar map. It shows the library, like, the greater library, like, response area. And calls that occurred for the month of May, in the response area. The bar for the circles, and on the, which the legend, under the larger circles, the bigger grouping, they call at that particular location. When I look at it, it looks pretty predictable.
When I look at it, it looks pretty predictable, it's pretty consistent. And what I see in Liberty Lake, which is clusters pretty close to here. So that map has been there for you. And then a summary sheet. We've outlined for the month of May, just a few calls we pulled out earlier that were either of interest or a little bit out of the ordinary, a little bit detailed about overall, looks like a pretty predictable month of, roughly a hundred calls or so in the response area. Couple other things I wanted to cover. One is that you should have received, if you haven't, please, please let me know, a copy of our annual report for 2017. And so that document was produced and distributed, it's ongoing, but just very recently. So I wanna make sure that everybody in the city council, all the city staff, has an opportunity to have a quick read. It's not a, it's not a difficult read, it's twenty pages or so, a pretty easy reading information on what the department did last year. And so I can provide more of those if they haven't made it here, this is the city call for your review. We had an open house recently, as you know, somebody may have attended that open house at Wollitt, it was an event, four hour event, had over seven hundred, between seven and eight hundred people through station, which is the new station in the country, it's a so beautiful station, probably a nice, a nice addition to the community, I think. And people enjoyed it, had a good time, of course, kids always have a good time at that event. And firefighters like showing off their stuffs, that's always a quality. We wrapped up our strategic plan, so it's been, we've worked on that the last month or two, pretty intently. That should be back to the department this week. We've been pushing graphs back and forth with the local facilitators. So the final, final, final version of that, it should be back the next couple of days, I would expect it by weekend, early. And then we'll get you a copy of the strategic plan. Again, thanks for everybody that participated and a number of folks from council, police department participated in that process for the Valley Fair. Monday night, the board of commissioners will be considering direction on partnering with the city of Liberty Lake on the public affairs lobbyist project in conjunction with CB School District. So that's on the docket for the board's discussion and direction to the fire chief on Monday night. I don't anticipate any issues with that, the board seems very supportive and, you know, agree that it's a wise thing for us to be endeavoring in as a part of the city and the school district. So just so you know, that's on Monday, that'll happen Monday night. Then lastly, I'm sure most of you have know, you know, long term, a long time, Commissioner Joe Dodson, who's been on the board of fire commissioners now, and fixture in the Valley for, he's been on the board over twenty years. Joe is resigning, plans on resigning his position. So that'll be, I think officially done on Monday night. Also just got, needs to focus on some other items at home, health issues and things like that, so. He's done a great, you know, been a great public servant for, for over two decades and obviously a great supporter for the fire district and community, so. We'll miss him, but he's got important stuff to take care of. So that's all I have, unless you have questions, Green.
Chief, I have a quick question for you. I was on the Centennial Trail last Monday, I'm holiday, and saw a couple of kids get stuck out in the water.
Yeah.
You guys responded. I was just curious, when you guys have to run out there, it looked like the kids were out there on small flotation devices without any kind of mess of any kind. What's the ramifications as far as the expense involved in doing that and people out at the river?
For us to go out, our expense?
Yeah, and then in relation to people that are out there, as I like to say the stupidity clause, but I was curious about it as I was watching it unfold.
It's expensive, as you know, because it takes a large team of people, it takes two teams to do a high-risk operation like that on the river. So you have the city of Spokane responding with their team. And the Valley's team also responding. And we do the same thing if it's anywhere in the city of Spokane, the two teams respond together. Those teams are anywhere from, you know, six, eight to twelve, fourteen people.
Right.
So the personnelers and the costs associated with that are pretty expensive.
Yeah, and I would say that was probably about the amount of people, because I think you had probably four of their kayaks out there ahead of time when I saw them. And it looked like it was fairly quick for them because they were holding on to a tree in the water, but.
Yeah.
I was just curious.
Of course, jackets now in the county are required on the river and you know, adults of these, who are about juveniles can be cited if they're not wearing life jackets or personal flotation devices. And those are provided, several are put in takeouts also along the river. Trying to do everything we can do to, you know, encourage people to take one, put it on if they don't come with their own.
Right.
But activity in the river is each and every year becoming more and more of a, you know, a frequent occurrence for us in terms of people getting in trouble out there. And this year it's off to a robust start. The weekends, we've been really busy on the river. So, well, they did, they did a nice job, they were out there quickly and it was, you know, got there safely, so I was just curious when I saw it, so, good job. Thank you.
I always find it interesting, as long as I've lived in this area, that every year we deal with individuals, unfortunately sometimes drowning. And there's one thing that's common in every single one of those, no life jacket. It's just amazing to me, the common sense goes by the wayside. There was a recent one, just in the last few days, some gallon of small tube falls off and is cleaned to bushes or something like that, no life jacket, you know.
Yeah.
It's unfortunate.
Yeah.
But still, you know, it regulates your...
You'll, you know, we'll continue the public awareness campaign, you know, trying to get people to recognize that they need to have that stuff on. But I, you know, there's a lot, there's probably a lot of factors. Some of it is they, you know, they, they are aggravated sometimes in the water, you know, a little bit, and that's obviously not a good mix. But that river's, you know, is much more dangerous than it looks.
Right.
In which we all know, but oftentimes people they didn't know that and don't seem to think about that before they get to it. So there's a lot of stuff under the surface of it that can cause you trouble. Make sure that you get in trouble.
Appreciate that, chief. Make sure we can start there, being that time, I think it was a quick break, so we can go back.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Lord, thank you for another beautiful day having you.
Be with our citizens as they continue to do your work here on earth and make this a wonderful place to live, clean community, good friendships, valued teachers, business people, you know, just all those good things that go on in our community. Thank you much for the opportunity to serve, amen.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, call the attorney, I think Dan's missing.
Mary, I'm with you, excuse.
Second. He just confirmed.
Okay. We're just saying for the discussion, I hear all people say hi. I suppose they go agendas before you, additions, subtractions, additions.
Mary, name the agenda with the modification of putting citizen comments under thirteen above number eleven.
Second, the discussion of the citizen act. No worries, the citizen comments.
You didn't have to have it modified for the...
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to request, we had the citizen comments on it.
You didn't need it modified for the...
Because of respect for the citizens and we should please ask them to propose a proposal. So we could, what I found in here didn't pass, I listened to recordings of meetings, you really can't hear anybody speak from the audience.
Okay. So J.C. Collier, where's J.C.? Come on up to the podium there. We appreciate you coming and...
Well, do you give us a thumb drive or something?
No, I went the old-fashioned way.
Oh, okay, we don't have that.
Yeah, print, you know?
Okay.
That's from you and I'll pass them around.
You know, the printing that...
Yeah.
Do you want to have any of them, Eddie?
Anyways, I just wanna bring something to the attention of the city. By the way, Mayor, appreciate your prayer. Thank you for letting me know that way. I live in the River District, have Liberty Lake address, but a green anchor zip code, so we know it's interesting and package is even more. Anyway, moved into that area seven years ago. At the time, Hall Avenue, which runs from the river to Mission, basically ended at the end of my, my street. Pictures on the back basically show where Hall ended. Now, from there, back to the river, there's two hundred and thirty homes approximately, okay? When the city and Greenstone designed that, they designed the half moon park, put a stop sign on the west side and they put it on the east side with no homes, okay? And there is no stop sign on Hall and Meyer as you enter into the park going south. I sit out as a retired gentleman now, smoking my Irish pipes and get to observe the walking neighbors, the children playing, the senior citizens, hold it. I'm a senior citizen, okay? Get to watch them walk, I also get to watch the flow of traffic. And it's amazing how many people liked to enjoy as you come into an intersection and speed around it. I think, to be honest with you, I think it was just an oversight, I don't think it was ever looked at when it was a dead end street. I think that a stop sign is appropriate for you coming into the park because of the simple fact of how many children are playing in the park, people walking, there are dogs, runners. And went down to the very spite that Liberty Lake's Spokane Valley, those halls, everyone buys their signs from Spokane Barricades and Sign Company. And I wanna let you guys know, this is not anything in regard to Liberty Lake, but I'm passionate about this because I'm proactive on everything I ever did in sales and led a district for twenty years, with it being the number one district in Leverry mustard states. I'm proactive on stuff, so that's how I approach things. And I am more than willing to pay for the stop sign, okay? If Liberty Lake struggles or it's not in the budget, I can afford the fifty-four dollars and a dollar twenty-four tax, okay? Sorry, I'd be more than willing to do that. In fact, I can have this signed up tomorrow before noon if the city would like me to do that. But I would rather see this take place than to see something tragic happen with a child. I don't think you can ever over, you know, never let that down. So that's the spiel. I have phone numbers, everything else on the back. I think we all agree with you, J.C., and they'll be out, Stephen will be out there tomorrow looking at that, chief.
Just a clarification of the intersection, so it's Hall and...
It is Meyer and...
Meyer and Hall.
Okay. If you look at it, it's O, L, L.
And the business area is definitely is a tense...
You know, it's, it's amazing, you have, you have cement trucks, you have lumber trucks, you have gravel trucks, you know, all over the way around, exactly. Right on, right on the parks. Now there's two parks in the River District. So, roll over, J.C.
Thank you, sir.
If I could help any of you, the city needs a donation of fifty-four dollars.
No, no, no. We appreciate your fantastic, thank you very much.
Thanks for coming.
Absolutely, thank you for your time. Hollywood.
Hey, Mr. Mayor and council members, I'd like to point out what I consider to be a customer service deficiency with regard to inspections. Recently I had our old furnace and air conditioner replaced. The work was completed on Thursday. The installers had contacted the state electrical inspector via their online, upon completion of the work. On Monday morning, I received a call from the state electrical inspector to set up an inspection time. We set it for Tuesday morning, the next day, between eight AM and noon. On Tuesday morning, the inspector called me from his cellphone and said he would be at the house between eleven and twelve, and probably closer to twelve. He arrived around eleven thirty and completed the inspection. He then reminded me to call the city of Liberty Lake to set up the city's mechanical inspection. I called the number on the building permit that day to set up the city inspection. I had to leave a voicemail since no one answered the phone. As requested, I asked for an inspection time that was at least twenty-four hours from the time that I called, which was Tuesday afternoon that I called, so I asked for Friday morning. I never received any confirmation that the inspection was scheduled. When Friday morning came and I hadn't heard anything by ten AM, I looked up the phone number on the old city website and talked to a woman, unfortunately I don't recall her name, I didn't write it down. She was very nice and verified for me that it was on the list, I was number nine on the list for that day, but she didn't know if they were there by noon. It's a good thing I retired because they weren't there by noon. I didn't get to the house until four thirty. There was no call to say he was running late, although he did apologize when he came and said it had been a busy day. The inspection didn't take long, although for some reason he was looking at the electrical system also, which had already passed inspection. Maybe things are better, I see on the new website that there's an online scheduling now for inspections that wasn't available just a few weeks ago. I scheduled mine, I just missed that. Still, I now I feel I should have had some kind of confirmation that my request had been received. And also, I feel that my time request couldn't be honored, should have at least, should have at least been notified. I mean, I'm retired, but what if I would have had to go to work that evening? I would have taken the morning off from work for nothing and then had to reschedule again, so. And I would have appreciated a call from the inspector to just tell me that he was running late. I understand things don't always happen. So, anyway, I just wanted to bring that to council's attention and hopefully with the new website and the online scheduling, maybe that's better, but, you know, confirmation would have been nice. Thank you very much.
Good day to everybody, appreciate it, and we will address that in the morning.
Yep.
So then we have Nita.
I wanted to talk actually after...
Oh, after the work, so?
If I could have a big...
Okay, okay, perfect. In the bar itself.
J.C. on Channel Four, right? Hey, Dan. Yes, you're looking old.
Because my snack cake, snack cake guy when I was a thousand, still got that sense of humor. I am old, I'm retired too, buddy. I have two things that I wanna cover, a comment and a question. The comment is, this is kind of a positive thing, that Karen and I, we found a little gym in Liberty Lake. And we enjoy the theater. We've been to a number of plays in Broadway in New York. We're season ticket holders for the Civic Theater, the I and B Theater, we just enjoy the theater. Well, Karen's birthday was last month, so I got her tickets for the Liberty Lake Theater. Charlie Brown, was the good old Charlie Brown of the play. I gotta tell ya, like I said, I've been to a number of productions. This was one of the most enjoyable productions I ever saw. And I want to let the people of Liberty Lake know that the next production that's coming up, I think it's in, it's in the next couple of months or something, because the auditions are right now. I urge you to go, check it out, this is awesome. Granted, you gotta, gotta realize they're amateurs, but they do a darn good job. And I think, we've got that sign out there, the signs throughout Liberty Lake, it brings up events. Is there a way that we could possibly put that on, you know, and possibly maybe on our reader board? Just, just a thought.
I think we just...
You know, you know, let people know about it, because we found out about it in a splash one day, you know. You're a good old man, Charlie Brown, that's what they're talking about, so. Okay, the other thing I have, what I'd like to talk about is a question. About six weeks ago, I presented to you folks the issue of the sidewalks. Where are we at?
So, we are incorporating it into our schedule. We do have a list of places that, where we are offering to grind down the sidewalks if we can. We're working it into a very busy season though, and I'm going to be honest with you, it's going to be a while before our crews get to it. If a homeowner would rather hire a contractor than do it themselves, they're more than, we're more than willing to waive the permit fee for them to do that. Dennis Scott and I had a conversation this morning because there is a long list and our streets crew is going to be tackling the list in the next few weeks. I don't want to promise you tomorrow.
I understand. There's three that really jump out at me, okay? The one I showed, the example that I left with you folks, you know, everybody was wondering, yeah, I've seen that. And my next question was, do mine have the hatchbacks have been fixed? That thing's that high. And I mean, it is really...
That's the one on Mission, yes.
From the STC.
And then the other one over by, on Appleway, where you see the three tiers that go down? Appleway and maybe Multer, I think?
I don't, I don't know firsthand that one.
Okay, it's in, it's in, it's in my, the, it's in the jump drive.
Okay.
And then the other one is right across from the Chevron on the, by the banner bank.
Dennis, do you know that one?
I know the location.
Yeah, it's right there by Yolks Banner Bank.
So basically, where we are with it, we, if it's a commercial area and it's the one that needs to be, we can't grind it down. We need to send them a letter, get, put them on notice to fix it and then follow up. There is, in the state of Washington, we have to, you know, put, you know, if they don't respond, which generally we're very, people generally respond very positively, but when they don't, our only, our only, excuse me, our recourse is to fix it and re-own the property. So we haven't had to do that, but I can tell you we'll follow up and...
That's all I ask.
It's on purpose.
Okay, I appreciate it. That's all. Thanks. Thank you. Robert McGinnan.
My name is Robert McGinnan. I'm in 1215 North. Put you on, it's just over here by the school. All right. Mayor and the city council, this is for you. For two years, there's a lot on the other side of Boone between the baseball park and the Boone. And there's an alleyway between the baseball and the school. You are watering mud, growing nothing but weeds and dust that's blowing in my yard and several people who live along there. I keep wondering how long it will take you to actually do something except this. You take pride in this city and yet, right over there where I live, you must love that place because two weeks ago, I had to phone the parks people and ask them if they could come cut down the dandelions that you all drove by. Every one of you, you did nothing. You didn't phone and say we should spray those. I had to phone. And if I sound like I'm a little angry, you better believe it. I paid taxes. You have a beautiful park across the street from you and not one of you people where you live has that eyesight in your place. I do. If I pay taxes, I expect your guys' pride because I just read it in the thing here. You have city pride. You have everything. You wanted to get that 50 million, that $14 million park over there done. You wanted it done immediately. Two years you've been talking about this. When are you going to do it, Mayor? And you please don't answer.
Sir, I think you need to calm down a little bit.
I don't have to calm down about anything. Why are civil rights giving me the right to say anything? I'm not an angry person. You people don't hear. That's your problem. Now, the sarcasm that's coming out of me right now ought to get to your nose.
Sir, well, listen to your comments, but if you're going to downgrade to...
Downgrade what? You haven't done anything. It's been sitting out there. Are you loving that piece of property out there? Please tell me.
This has nothing to do with the property. It's the tone that you're using with the council. And it's unappreciated and it's unnecessary.
Wonderful. It is? Last time it was you that wanted us up here talking.
Sir, if you need to calm down, I'm going to ask you to leave.
Okay, before we get going on this before Pro Kim, let me give you an example. I already know my civil liberties, how I say it, where I say it.
You do not have a right to say something.
I have a right to talk as loud as I want.
No, you do not.
This is the council.
Okay, you can either express yourself in calm demeanor.
Okay, now in calm demeanor. Mr. Kennedy, is he here? Six weeks ago, you went to Tacoma. Is that right, to a little meeting? I see here, because sometimes I got nothing to do at night, so I read this right off the report of the city council. You know what this is, right? This shows all of your expenses for that little trip.
Right.
I'd like to know how you racked up $1,351 for three days.
We're not going to answer that question this time. If you want to have the time to discuss that with the city,
I want to do right now, you people.
The city administrator and myself will be happy to do that. This is not the time or the place to have that discussion, but we'll be happy to answer that question at a different time.
Do you like to hide behind anything?
I'm not hiding behind anything. We'll give you anything that you want to know regarding that. This is not the time or place for that to occur.
What is it time if we cannot speak to the council about the things that concern us the most in front of the people who have the same concerns as I do?
Absolutely, you can have the information, but the way you're asking and the, and the tone is not appropriate.
Well, let me give you an idea, Pro Kim. The next time you come up first, when you come up, when you come up or anybody else in this council comes to the election, I will spend every waking hour I have to make sure you don't get elected, guaranteed.
This is our city attorney, to Pro Kim, just to clarify.
I don't care who it is.
Well, I just want to make sure you understand that.
Thanks, Robert.
Nothing, don't thank me for anything. I'm pissed off that you won't do anything.
We've never noticed.
Anyway, so we're at reports, city and board commission reports, so do we have... Sheriff District here? There it is, okay. I don't have anger. Can't you find someone to report for us?
I'll be good.
Everything is flushing and the water comes up. A library floor.
I'm Carol John. I'm from the Board of Trustees of the library. We are continuing to accept applications for the library director job. We currently, I believe, have 10-plus applications. So we are, as a board, planning on our interviewing process that will go on and we're on schedule for that process for appointment of the library director in October when we move in. In addition to that, I'd like to thank those who contributed to the letter campaign that the Friends of the Library had. Some of you are very generous and we appreciate that. They have at the current time collected over $2,000 for the staff campaign, which is a wonderful testimony to people being generous with the Friends of the Library. The Father's Day baskets are currently at the library for the children to make their bond with their parents and so they hope to raise money from that. The book sale is coming up on June 22nd and 23rd this week and this is the yard sale. So if you're interested in some of the books, they will be available for sale. The reading program, I believe Janie talked to you about today and that's starting this month and will go through, it goes from 6:18 to 8:11. And registration is online for that for all age groups. Another thing that I'd like for you to all from on your calendar, those of you who are in attendance as well as those who are here, the library is having a fundraiser in August at the Liberty Lake Wine Cellars. It is on Knox Road. The tickets will be $20 per person and they're planning to have appetizers and desserts. If any of you know Cindy Troxel, she'll be doing the food for that event. She's done the tea in the spring for the library, for the Friends of the Library, and she does a wonderful job. So there'll be lawn games and activities. It's an adult event, clearly. And they'll have wine, beer, and cold drinks available for people. So put that on your calendar. We would love to have you participate.
I have a question.
Yes.
Would you please remind me what the selection process is for the new director? They interviewed by the Board of Trustees, is that correct?
There will be a screening process done by RJ and Katie. And then following that, when they get the candidates narrowed down to a smaller number, then they will be interviewed by panels that will be made up of the library, Board of Trustees members, Friends of the Library, staff members from the library, community members, and then a selection will be made.
And then you make a recommendation. Does city council have a recommendation?
Point of clarification, so we do want the council to participate on a panel in some fashion. However, according to our charter and our bylaws, which RJ researched for me, the appointment is by the mayor and RJ, there isn't subject to the council's confirmation. So it's not a big thing, but I just wanted to know, we wouldn't be bringing back the person to be approved by the council, though we certainly want the council to be supportive of the hire. But there isn't a formal action by the council that's required. Maybe that's the best way to say it.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments at this time?
I've got a quick comment. This is about Liberty Lake, Silver and Water. It's more of a thank you to you guys. I was just able to attend two field trips recently with my fifth grade son and both times you had personnel out there. And it is awesome community engagement by you guys out there educating kids on ecology and water and also the great things. So just, so I thank you guys. Just wonderful to know those things and see, see our friends there.
As a point there, a little fire station, we're going to turn that into, it's going to be a place where you can park trucks and do lab work and stuff like that. It's also going to be an education center. So we're going to promote that once we design and build and set up. So there'll be more of that outreach to the community and the kids and so people know what's going on and we're seeing more of this. It's awesome. It's interesting. Kids like that. There's parks. There's all kinds of things.
Any other comments?
Hey, Kate. Kate?
Okay, so, yes.
Yeah, but my friend.
Yes, please, Mayor. Yes, please. I thought it was my cue to give my report, but I know the mayor has some recognition today. Yeah, I listen, okay.
Two years of work. I've had six years of less. We have a couple, a couple of little individuals here. One's from, Mark, you're up here. Just come back up here for a minute.
This council member identified you to be recognized.
Yes, so we understand that you've been out looking at the sidewalks.
A little bit, yeah.
And then it's got you a couple times with the trash bag.
Oh, my Friday, okay, that's a little sort of pretty thing. Yeah, you sound like you look pretty, listen again.
There are no jobs being issued for you right now.
But I don't even, I try to remember.
I know that. I don't mind you. But there is a little card in here and a little bit of thanks from all of us at the council.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Where's Dennis? I see you tend to come up here, Dennis. This is my buddy. So Dennis Stewart, you live in Villis, correct?
I do, yeah.
Dennis Stewart is our councilor. Dennis is well-known to me because every day, about once or twice a week, there's a silver bag left out there on Valley Way. And Dennis took it upon himself, first to rake, clean up all of Valley Way from Walter to basically the city limits. Then he got a lawn mower. Now he mows it. And so consistently doing something above and beyond. Nobody asked him to. Works out in the morning, then comes and does this like a regular job. You know, just, Valley Way couldn't sparkle more without your help. And, you know, I told you, I said, I want to make sure that you got something appreciative of what you do for us.
Hey, I've got a question for you.
Oh, God.
Wait, were you angry?
Where is this piece of property?
Well, that's a question I have too.
I believe he's talking about the, what we call the north field, so it would be on Boone, just north of the elementary school.
That's my neighbor. He invited me to come up. Oh, my gosh. I am kind of curious off the subject, yes, where are we going to be with that?
Oh, well, there's a deal. Wait, here's the deal, right?
You didn't get a chance to answer.
We've graded it, right, inside the fence and planted it with seed in such a draw and that's all the water. Trying to get it to grow grass. Field look...
Not this field, not this field.
No, this is on the other side. This is, this is west of that field, right?
Let me think.
It's on the, between the school and the...
So you got the new elementary school.
Yeah.
And then you got the field to the north of that. Which would be lawn Boone there. So is that the field you're talking about?
Yeah, it's right across here from our house.
Yeah.
Is it the one that's fenced?
Not fenced.
Okay, so we're not talking about this.
Yeah, it's next to Parkland.
Next to the parking lot. We've been trying to build a parking lot on that. You know, we proposed this year to do something there. We looked at maybe not doing that this year. We'll go out there and make sure that it's cleaned up.
How's it going to volunteer?
Well, there's some...
Can I just start the oil here, guys?
It's got a more attack.
That's good.
I think, I think we'll get it all cleaned up.
I just sprayed the dandelions in the spring. By the way, I put a bunch of rocks down to keep the driveway. Can I get one of those cards too?
Somebody has to see you doing that.
Take a selfie and send it in. I love it.
Hey, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to point out that for Mark's benefit, that he didn't take the time to show us, but he's given even blood to the city.
Oh, yes. He fell on my knee, yeah.
He fell down like he was trash and damn.
Good luck. Yeah, it's gay, sir.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. So I'm going to have, I have a report, but before I start with number one, I did want to let you know that Memorial Day Pancake Breakfast was a huge success for our community. There was over 500 people, a little bit over 500 people that attended, 94 veterans. And I just have to publicly recognize our city staff, Jen's crew, that was there at 5:00 o'clock Monday morning setting up tables. There were some students at Central Valley High School that needed community service hours, so they showed up at 5:00 a.m. and then helped us pick up. And I know Rotary partners with the city on this event and it's very well received. And I just have to publicly acknowledge the council members that were there. Councilmember Moore, Kaminski, Kennedy, and Mayor Peterson, but also just our staff was just fantastic. So thank you, Jen. They did an outstanding job. So moving along, number one, we sold some surplus property and went quick, $48,000. Our minimum started in with $25,500, so we're glad that that property is now in the hands of someone that is going to develop it, is my understanding.
But how many people were there to actually have been paid?
You know, I think it was five or six. There was active three to four bidders and then at the end it got down to two that were going back and forth for a little bit. Chief Asmus was in charge, so do I have the facts straight, there's about fours, yeah, something like that. It went fairly quickly. I think the whole auction was all of 15 minutes, so.
Good job.
Orchard Park Phase Two, so this is going to take a little bit of time, but a couple of weeks ago, someone was asking me about Phase Two. Would, would we want to move forward sooner than later? And I have to tell you, my first response was, we can't take on any more work. I mean, you hear, you hear about sidewalks, you hear about the work that we're getting behind on. And I was very concerned about veteran into Phase Two this year. But then I thought about it over the weekend. I talked to Dennis and I said, Dennis, what if we found a way to move forward with Phase Two now? Would you recommend it? And so we had a long conversation. And I have to say that if, if the council wants to move forward, if the council and the mayor want to move forward with Phase Two, there's some advantages to doing it this year over next year. Let me tell you what those are. And Dennis, Dennis, do you want to add, why don't you sit right here in case the council has any detailed questions on what Phase Two would be included? So specifically, if we bid it next year, we know the price is going to be more than what it was bid at this year. That's number one. Number two, we have to pay money to repackage it. That means that we have to pay our consultant to put together applicable documents so we can go out and advertise it. to put together applicable documents so we can go out and advertise it again, that costs money, that takes time and resources, we have a, we have a bid today that we could execute as a change order, which means we can pick and choose the order, it also means that we can change some of the project elements in the negotiation of those costs, so we spent a little bit of time, and Dennis has been working with a contractor, and for purposes of tonight, we want to answer all your questions, but we really want to know, is the council interested in this, because if you are, we would bring back more information on June 19th, if you're not, then we won't, but I don't want to spend a lot of resources getting all this information together, and then RJ putting together the details of exactly how are we going to pay for it to advance, if you aren't interested, but it, and I, I don't, my goal tonight is not to put you on the spot, but just to let you know that we do see advantages on a cost and on a coordination, logistics out in the field, and also on staff resources, if you chose to move forward this year instead of next, so I'm going to stop talking and I'm willing to take all, and Dennis can let you know what's in the Phase Two that we're looking at, it's in that 1.1 million dollar range, it's not everything, but it's enough that I'll have Dennis kind of talk about what those things are and what the contractor is, can do if we give him indication that we do want, we're interested in talking of moving Phase Two forward.
Of the alternatives that we had identified in the bid package, the only ones that we probably would not do is the landscape reduction addition, we don't need to have more landscape, that was seventy-five thousand dollars, and we would probably hold off on the community garden, that was twenty-six thousand two hundred dollars, but within the 1.1, you'd have the pavilion, the additional sight lighting, the pad for the maintenance building, the south parking lot and pathways, the picnic shelters, the sport court, which right now would also include two additional tennis courts that was not within the 1.1 because the school had paid for that, so you'd number four tennis courts, and then the site furnishings, the five to twelve-year-old play structure and the slide hill, and we are talking with the contractor about an option that would reduce the cost of the pavilion to go to a wood structure that had the same theme, but instead of steel, the steel is what really caused that, caused to go off, we've got the contractor working on a preliminary figure for us, so next week, they have by Friday, so if the council should decide to go ahead, we'll have that package put together for the 19th for your review.
Dennis, just, when you talk of going from steel to wood, it would be very similar to the.
It would be similar, it would be similar to the pavilion, with the exception that the city wanted to have a railroad theme, which means that on the, basically what it means, on the top of the roof, you'd have this cupola kind of effect.
Like we have a town, town center.
Yes.
Mike, is it?
Do we have approximate idea what we think the savings would be, I go back and I look at the original numbers here, and on Phase Two is 1,193,864 dollars, based on the two things that you mentioned, landscape reduction, community garden, you had 81.6 on that, 28, so that is about 110,000 dollars there, are we, and we're also, I'm assuming anticipating we'll save some money, we don't know yet on what the pavilion will cost.
Right.
Is there any other savings that we could, so like the slide hill, what is a slide hill for a hundred grand?
Well, slide hill is a feature that allows kids to climb up and slide down in two or three different locations on the hill, it's not a big hill.
But for a hundred grand?
Right.
Is it, oh, just throw me, is there something we could live without for a hundred grand?
You can live without any of this.
We can live without anything, yeah, and that's more of a question, I guess, for the troops here, I for one would like to say that I'm in favor of moving ahead with the Phase Two, when we first started talking about this with Phase One, I spoke in favor of Phase Two at the time, realizing costs, things of the sort here, my concern with, another concern which hadn't been mentioned, moving ahead with Phase Two, I think gives additional time for other things to come on the agenda, which takes our attention away, and also costs, and I really have a serious concern that if we wait on Phase Two, there can be other things that suddenly want to be added.
Well, I can't.
Could cost us a lot more money.
I can't answer what may come up to be added, but it doesn't take much to understand that costs are increasing, you know, you have to go to the gas station and see what's happening with the gas.
Well, because of that, that's why I'm in favor of it, but if I can see a real cost savings, that just enhances for me making the decision to move ahead with this.
The biggest, the biggest cost of this whole thing, as you know, is the pavilion, and I was hoping that I would have at least some idea of what the savings would be to go to void it today, so I could tell you that, but unfortunately you won't get it until Friday.
Yeah, it was 509,000 dollars, I won't even ask you to try to speculate on that, but if it comes in for 9,000, that would be great. I just, I just want to throw that out.
Mark, how are you thinking?
Thank you.
Sorry, I wouldn't mind seeing the numbers come back, we can't make any decision one way or the other without actually seeing the numbers, if I recall the discussions, you know, part of the reason we wanted to split this up is because we wanted to possibly split up the cost in over years, so we could, you know, have a catch, we do it, there's so many other projects on the table, so for me, I would like to see the information, but that's no guarantee, you know, my support or non-support until I see the numbers.
RJ, would you, because this is really going to come down just to finance, I mean, we're looking at, like Chris says, you know, we looked at, we want to split this this year or do it next year, and one of the concerns was, you know, how are we going to pay for it this year and get reimbursed from lift to tip, we've had good conversation with the commissioners here, I think you were at a number of weeks ago, saying that as soon as we get a final invoice, we can turn in that to lift and get that money registered back to us within 30 or 60 days.
So I think the Phase One, we have that covered using our REITs and some general fund dollars, then we're going to submit for reimbursement to get back on there, if we were to do another phase on top of that, now the cost is closer to 4 million, I could talk to US Bank about establishing a land credit, and maybe the same principle, so.
But I guess to get to this point, when we look, when we're building out Orchard Park right now, you know, we're going to get Phase One coming on stream and finished up.
This time next year.
Pardon?
Probably, well, it'll be done in October, but the grow-in, it probably won't be active until this time next year.
I'm just looking for.
Project completed.
I'm just wondering whether we get completed invoices.
Gotcha.
And so if we get them completed by October, we would get reimbursed by, say, late December, January, sixteen, nineteen days.
So we're, we're looking at, as soon as we get the invoices in, and we could even maybe, I don't know if we get partial invoices, but if you break it down into sections, again, you know, the commissioners, the counties more than willing to work with us to make sure that we get.
So we submitted to the county after that meeting we had with the public works gentleman there, we submitted their plans, Greenstone, Kevin Schnaps, I was there as well, this is everyone's on board that we're doing Orchard Park, they understand there's anything wrong with the project, it's within public infrastructure, so we were moving forward with the Phase One.
Right.
To be reimbursed, so if we induce Phase Two into this, we're doing it in conjunction with Phase One, it sounds like we would be a split project.
Yeah, well, I mean, I don't know, however you want to look at it, I look at its components and stuff, even if you take the pavilion as a component, you know, like you make, you take a pump house or a pump, you know, lifting, infrastructure is a sort of, anyway, I think that's kind of where we're at right now, as far as, Dennis, keep working on getting that bid back or getting that negotiated payment back, and then again, looking at financial package, however you want to put it together, RJ, but just, Dennis, it's not so much, the money's going out of our pocket not to be coming back again, it's going to go out of our pocket, then it gets reimbursed again through the lift situation.
I would hope of the council and staff and citizens and mayor and everybody, that we use common sense with this, just because there's a strong possibility we're going to get paid back from TIFT and LIFT, that we just don't look at things as like, well, we get the money, let's go ahead and add it, are these things that we really do need, because realizing what we save here, we can use that as funds for things that we really need also move ahead on, so I really caution us that we use common sense, we think about what we're spending the money, and just not the motivation is that we're going to get our money back.
And I would ask, when we look at the information next week, that we include as, you know, we're looking at what are we saving by doing it now versus later, include the staff time, include the redrawing of the documents, all those additional costs that might incur if we, if we do it later, because that's part of the delta between the saving and the savings.
So it's really a risk assessment of defer, the cost of deferral.
Kind of add on to Mayor saying, I think it'd be really helpful, though, if we could look at, if I'm hearing correctly, you're talking about packaging all in one project, you can reimburse it.
That's what I heard, was talking about the, we would afford the Phase Two.
If we did Phase Two, would we, you have Phase One reimbursed and then Phase Two reimbursed as separate projects, or is that, it seems like we talked about that a month ago.
So that's what I understood, Phase One and Phase Two were happening at two different times, now it sounds like they're happening at the same time, so part of the clarity is a completed project, is what I understand is what we then we will seek reimbursement from lift and tip, we haven't, there hasn't been a scenario yet, Mayor, that's come up where it's been a partial reimbursement, not that we don't have Greenstone, but.
It's a diff, it's a different animal, it's what you're talking about, totally different animal between the developer and the city, two animals.
Is it helpful for a cash flow purpose to, assuming, to help you from a cash flow standpoint and get some reimburse as much as soon as possible?
Oh, oh.
Part of my concern for going through this, and in our next meeting, I'm very strongly in favor of moving forward with something like this, assuming that it's physically responsible for the next couple of years for cash flow purposes in cities, that's what I want to look at, I've gotten a surprising amount of feedback from River District neighbors, I'll say, that they want the extra amenities, like, man, this is going to be a really cool park, we would really love to see those tennis courts and basketball court and pavilion, and we think it'll be used immediately, I think it's a really good project, as long as it makes financial sense over the next couple of years, so you can kind of show us that, not just how to pay for it now, but how does it affect, how's it affect our budget right?
So what can we talk about at the six o'clock portion of the meeting is, is when we bring back the tip and lift resolution, we're looking to update on the 19th, Mayor, and also a quick summary on the tip and lift, where the balances are at and how funding mechanisms work in there, I think the end result, at the end of the day, this is a eligible lift-tip project that's been identified within the plan that was done 10 years, 12 years ago, and that reimbursement, at the end result is that we would, we're eligible to receive all that money back, using the dollars, so.
Oden?
Yes, RJ, when you get ready to bring this information back, would you please take a quick look and come back and be able to explain to the council how we can spend 2018 money?
Really?
Have to settle the budget at the end of 2018, and then get a refund of 2018 money in 2019, and then reassess it back to where it went, okay, and I may, that may be stated the whole wrong way, but what I'm hearing you say is it's good likely that we could spend the money 2018, we're going to have to justify it in the budget, then get a pay back in 2019, so I'd like to know a little bit more about how that flows back and forth.
Bob?
Yes, thank you, I think that's a good question, I'd also like to remind all the council members that we all voted for Orchard Park, the project, the overall project, we all approved it, what was going to be there, what was going to look like, the only thing that really changed was what it was going to cost, and no fault to the city or anybody else, it ended up being costing us twice as much as we anticipated, so it seems to me that we, we still should have Orchard Park, and we still want everything that we voted for, the only difference, the only thing that's changed is how do we pay for it, how do we finance it, and I think if RJ and everyone else involved and the commissioners can come up with a way that's acceptable to us, I think we should proceed with the project and do what we started to do, just have, have a park in the River District.
Okay, so to conclude, we'll bring back what's in Phase Two, the financing for Phase Two, options, cash flow, tip and lift questions, the other thing that I do want to underscore is that there's a window to negotiate this change order, and it's not a big window, because the contractor's out there and he needs to procure those sub consultants, the equipment and everything, so I just asked Dennis when we would need to know, and it's soon, and I, I don't know what soon means, other than, I don't think we have the luxury of a lot of time to decide, so hopefully, we can bring it back and that information on the 19th, so there could be a decision, if not, we'd be into July and that, I think that's risky, I don't know for sure, but I'm concerned that we might be running out of time to execute a change order, so on that note, Dennis wants to give you some good news, so he'll just take a minute or two and give you an update on some projects.
Just, Fort Projects, pedestrian crossing, as you know, it's completed, and it was completed under budget, we saved probably around 6,000 dollars for that.
Which projects, sir?
The pedestrian crossing on Country Vista.
Thank you.
Lapway Restriping is now complete, that water blasting, if you've traveled it, you've probably noticed that there's roadway, it's kind of scarred, the contractor's going to be out there tomorrow morning, doing a slurry type of a seal to get that stuff sorted, it doesn't get rattle up anymore, the Harvest Parkway is under construction, they're now starting on their sewer installation, and that requires some pretty deep excavation, some of us up to 18 feet deep, and the trailhead irrigation, David Taylor, the designer of the irrigation system, is going to be attending on Thursday, so we will be meeting with him and getting an update on what that design progress is making.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to number three, public affairs agreements, so just a couple of notes that is included in this report, and we also have some edits because there's not 31 days in April, so let me touch on a few things, one is, I do have email confirmation from Ben Small that Central Valley High School District is going to participate, the Fire District, they indicated to me at the conclusion of the workshop that they will make a decision by their next meeting, not by tonight, but it's overall fairly positive, but we will not, we won't have confirmation for their participation until after tonight's meeting, having said that, there is kind of an urgency around getting the consultant on board sooner than later, and so, in conversation with Councilmember Kaminsky, there were some edits we need to make to this contract, so I talked to Sean, we'll make the edits before the mayor signs it and before they sign it, if you wanted to speak to those.
Yeah, well, a couple, so, I do have a question that we really didn't talk about today, so, since this, the earliest this contract will be in effect is tonight, so June 10th, so is the, is the contract 24,000 dollars or is it 2,000 dollars a month, because at 2,000 dollars a month, for only, we only have 10 months till the end of April, so it would actually be 20,000 dollars, so are we looking at a 24,000 dollar contract or a 2,000 dollar a month contract?
So, the legislative session wraps up the end of April, and to Mayor, correct me if I'm wrong, but my understanding, the, the contract will be concluded at the end of April.
Right, let me ask you about the cost of that.
The contract, the discussion we had was that the contract would run through the legislative session of 2019, the normal wrap-up date is the end of April, and even though in the years past, it went to June and July, what I also understand is that this is a kind of a lump sum.
What I also understand is that this is a kind of a lump sum contract, so it's a fixed amount. Our thought was that we would all pay it on a monthly basis, but it's a, it's a fixed amount.
Okay, so then that's, then that'll have to be changed, because it's a $2,000 a month that's in the contract, only comes to $20,000 if we're strange. We talked about the fire department and school district, my concern was earlier when we talked was, you know, we don't have any confirmation from them, and so we've got some blue tickets in there from Ben Small, we'd be on the hook for all $24,000. It sounds like, based on the email we got from Ben and what Chief Collins said earlier, that it sounds like we're going to be in pretty good shape to, at a minimum, split it with the school district, and most likely, split it three ways. So they would, oh, sorry, so I'm assuming that that's a memorandum of understanding between us and each of those entities, and they would reimburse us?
Correct, so we would bring that back to council to sign at a future meeting.
And I was just going to say, on a positive note, the fire department's response is a lot for good, and we projected initially, we're beginning conversations with them, and we all met with them, so that's very positive, see that they're really interested, invested, and that they're moving forward sooner than, as far as discussion and decision.
And the other thing we talked about, given the fact that there's mention sort of in the summary about Parker Road, we want to make sure since Spokane Valley is not participating in this, that any lobbying that's being, that is going on does not include.
It includes, right, correct, projects in Liberty Lake.
Yeah.
So we want to add that, Sean, that their efforts will be focused on projects in Liberty Lake.
Okay.
Those are all good, sorry.
Okay, so this is on the agenda later, excuse me, this is on the, yeah, so this is on the agenda later, I want to have a discussion now, so when we get to that, if you want to make a motion to approve it based on the amendments, then we can do that.
Thanks.
Okay, moving along.
There was one other, there was one other thing, if I recall, I think that, it says something in there about the people will be reporting to the mayor, and it would be better if the city council was involved in some manner, because we would also put it in there so that the city council was involved in the contracting agreement, report to the mayor and the mayor pro temp of the city council.
In the workshop that we had, and everyone else that was there can weigh in too, we think it's important that they bring it back to the full council, because I think the full council needs to actively and visibly take a position on these projects.
And we spoke with them at their initial meeting, they had mentioned that they'd be more than happy to have the city council updated reports.
That's great.
So it was great to have that.
It doesn't say nothing.
Yeah, yeah, I understand.
Yeah, and you know, even if they don't want to travel here by then, we should have our video system up, would be my guess, is there some way to?
They will be.
Well, even if they can't be here, I'm thinking, can, can we do a web meeting if they go, if they want to keep the expenses down, have a report, just like a WebEx or GoToMeeting or something?
The project will be fully, council will be fully informed about what's going on with the project and legislative, so we'll say it's from, update from both guys, for ourselves and some other departments.
Great, thank you.
So with our new TV monitors, I bet we would have the technology for that.
We have, that's right. And it may be helpful for us to have a, because a lot of times, they'll have those legislative committee meetings, and they're looking for a televised site, so maybe we can utilize the city hall as a televised site to transfer back information to.
Testimonials.
Meetings are happening on, happening on the hills, so we will incorporate that into the language.
Chris, thanks for looking into it.
Okay, so I want to move along to number four, this has been mentioned, so the director of planning and engineering recruitment, we did, I did send you a draft recruitment document, we would like to move out quickly and get that posted tomorrow, and then hopefully we would end it, the application period, the end of June, so that we can get someone on board as soon as possible. We're really, it's really important that we keep that ball rolling, it's already been three months since Amanda's departure, so I feel like we need to keep moving. So if there's any comments or concerns, again, this is another director position, so it is appointed by the mayor, but certainly I'll get input from all of you as we go through that review process. Okay? Pardon? Oh, thank you. There is no budget amendment, but we do want you to amend the budget to include the position, so that will come back on June 19th, and it will be called the Director of Planning and Engineering.
Yeah, and that will change the whole salary schedule section, right?
Yeah.
Well, because we have to add the position.
We'll add the position, add the salary schedule, but no budget amendment is required. Okay. Okay, so moving along, one of the things that has become apparent to us, and Lisa's played a big role in this, is that in 2015, we did a land quality analysis, it's being used by other jurisdictions in DOT, it's also being used by the county, oh, excuse me, by the school district to draw their boundaries. We have found that there are areas of our city that the estimates are above and beyond what they should have been, especially in the River District. So what happened, and from where I was sitting, was when I was looking at the math, they took the area south of Mission over in the River District and identified it as residential, and they also didn't incorporate open space, parks, the Truchina site, which is 55 plus, senior housing, a whole host of things. So Lisa has the expertise to come in and kind of relook at all this and get it geared up, it's going to take us a couple of weeks probably to get it fixed, but then we want to provide it to the school district, so that when they look at their boundaries, they can use the numbers that we think are more accurate and reflective, and Lisa did, I forget anything, we think order of magnitude, it's probably off in that 20 to 25% range. So we need to get our numbers, I'd rather take the time and get it right than to rush it, so I'm glad, we're fortunate that Lisa has the expertise and knowledge to do this, because I didn't.
I'm assuming Ben Small knows we're going through this exercise, because I know there has been a ton of backlash on social media about the different proposals with regards to the boundaries for the middle school. This could maybe a huge, huge change.
So I don't, we don't want to promise anything, but I think we owe it to the school district to give them good data, so they can do their analytics accordingly. Okay. I'm going to move along to the July 3rd council meeting, so that's a Tuesday before the 4th of July. Talking internally, we would like to move it to July 10th, and because back-to-back council meetings really have an impact on our staff, if we go the 10th and the 24th, then there's five Tuesdays in that month, so we'd be meeting the 2nd and the 4th Tuesdays. So if you're okay with that, and we'll make the proper notification, is that okay?
You're up here, and you know.
Okay, okay, and then dates remembered, just real quick, I already mentioned in the June 6th roundabout meeting, tomorrow night at Center Place, I think it starts at 5:00. June 9th, 16th, 23rd, and 30th is Farmer's Market, and just as a side note, the school handed out those neck, dog tag type things, and we had a 10-year-old that came into town, or came into city hall to get his badge, so you might get a lot of badges down there, do you have them in your box?
They are in the box, yes.
Because Cooper was his name, it was delightful, it was a delightful conversation, they take it very seriously, so.
Well, the bonus about doing it at Farmer's Market is they earn their badge, you know, right there, instead of, instead of just giving them the paper and saying, hey, check into this, they can actually start.
Well, he got a whole tour of city hall, he talked to us, and I think he wants to be a treasurer, is what he told us.
Give him a job, RJ. I can't be treasurer anymore.
Okay, so June 16th is the Soapbox Derby, we'll be closing in Malta for that, the Grot Sales, already mentioned, the 22nd and 23rd, and then finally, the Yakama Annual Conference with AWC. So mayor, that concludes my recording.
Good. Any comment?
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah?
Comment? Katie, on the land quality analysis, what I find interesting about that, and I appreciate getting that information, I attended that evening there at the school, and I was there for 90% of it, what I did, I went from easel to easel, just to listen to the people, and what was interesting is that each easel they had, the school district had two to three individuals there, explaining to the citizens, and what was interesting is that what they explained is that they had put tremendous amount of time and effort in research in these numbers, and were assuring the citizens that these numbers are correct, why they've changed the lines, and it's disappointing to find out that they don't have the correct information. It's just, makes the system look bad to the citizens, because now they're going to have to take all these hours that they spent looking at all this for Liberty Lake, and actually look at the numbers, which can change those lines, and citizens right now with the negative comments have come up. The biggest thing I heard that evening was individuals, it was majority of the people who were there, and in the hour and a half or two hours, there was, I'd say, max 50 people that were there.
Oh, my God.
Yeah, maybe 50 people, and it was about the lines and stuff, so the pushback is still be interesting. So thank you for getting the information.
Well, we want the right decision made, Michael. We want the right decision made.
Absolutely, absolutely, yeah. Unfortunately, wherever the line is drawn, you know, some of the, some of those mothers were there saying, well, I have friends, you know, my son has a kid across the street, they're going to go to a different school than I, and they want that changed, and I was trying to say to a couple of people, unfortunately, no matter where you put the line, someone's going to be, somebody's going to be upset.
The updated plan looks better than the original one that was posted, but this could be a huge change.
Yeah, I agree.
Make more people happy.
The cookies were very good, though, weren't they?
Just for the citizens' update, and some of the council that couldn't make it, we had our staff appreciation lunch, it was excellent turnout, we had roughly 55 staff members that showed up, and it's not often that the entire staff can sit down and have lunch together and just mingle, and so from my perspective and the rest of the council, it was great turnout, I appreciate all the council members that could attend, but the council members that could not attend, it was definitely recognize that your heart is there with the rest of us, working hard to feed all those staff, so thank you for the rest of the council showing up and putting in some work.
And we got food poisoning.
No, I got food poisoning, so.
Yeah, yes.
I don't think, no one said anything, so.
If they did, I didn't cook it.
It was very well received, thank you.
Actually, somebody said she made me an hamburger.
Me an hamburger.
What else, anything?
Nope.
Okay, workshop discussion, which is, I had a listener.
Hi. Ladies and mayors and city council, so I am going to try and be, and I'm going to start out by saying that I know we are a long meeting, and so I'm going to try and focus the community events, and I'm going to start out and share with you what I, I think the very essentials are that we want to accomplish this evening, and then talk about the schedule and how we can adjust to the meeting. So, I'm going to, I'm going to. Okay, so, so question for most of the top of the schedule, and I'm going to, I'm going to touch base on some of the refinements that have happened to some of what we've already seen, they, we do have, we have populated the pillars with some strategies, and I'm going to, we skim over those, and suggest that we circle back on those at meeting on the 19th, because what I do want to get to is the list of capital projects, and I'm going to tell you how we got there, and explain methodology, and I'd like to give you directions to the prioritization exercise. Once we go through the capital projects, we may want to add some, we may want to delete some, and that's going to be important, I'll plug it into the prioritization exercise that I'm going to be sending out to all of you tomorrow, and we're going to be asked to get, to get those back. And that, the whole thought behind this, and I hate to feel like I'm rushing you, but the whole thought behind this expedited schedule is to really get to a place where this strategic plan can inform you and the mayor and staff as it relates to development of the budget and discussions around the budget. And so, so this is what our schedule is looking like, so after tonight's workshop, tomorrow, I hope to send out the prioritization exercise and all of these instructions, it's going to be pretty straightforward. And then on June 19th, we'll do a council workshop, we'll be able to take a deeper dive into the strategic strategies then, and that'll give you some kind of digest the materials that I just sent out last night, also, and we'll be looking back when you have a chance to digest it. And we'll be looking for you to give us back revisions to the strategic plan. I'd also like to discuss some of the rest, graphic presentation concepts, you guys got some ideas, and I'm going to hopefully try and put them into a format that you can kind of see the idea. I think that if, if you think that it's important to go that route, you probably need to hire somebody to do the graphic design for it, because it's a little bit more complicated than what we can pull off with the part. I'm going to let that down. And so on July 10th, hoping to present, to bring back the draft strategic plan, hopefully we'll lay out graphics, and we could, if you're comfortable, roll it out to the plan commission the next day on the 11th, we want to get the full thing out to the Farmer's Market on boards, and our city website, and no fires directly following that roll out, and we think that it's important to have a community open house, and we could, yes.
When you say city website, we'll get pushed out to social media also.
Oh, yes.
Okay, excited.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely. Yes, sir.
Lisa, I just wanted to congratulate you on the wonderful job you've done on this to assist the city council and staff and the city of Liberty Lake in developing this strategic plan. I think you've done a great job bringing this forward and explaining it to everyone and it's going to be, I think, presented in a way that everyone can understand it. I just wanted to make one, one comment, you know, we, council, the city, worked for two years in developing a plan for a community center and a library and a senior center, and I don't see the word senior mentioned anywhere in the strategic plan. Since we have some senior citizens here this evening, I think they might be interested also in a senior center of some kind for the city. I personally have belonged to the Spokane Valley Senior Center, and it's a very, very comprehensive program that they have there, we have nothing in Liberty Lake, we have no senior programs at all, even the library, nobody mentioned any senior programs. So anyway, I'd just like to bring that up, since I'm a senior citizen, and hopefully you all will be one someday.
I certainly hope so.
And when we get to the, when we get to the discussion this, this evening about the capital projects list, that's certainly something that you can add, you can add to the prioritization matrix for you city council. Again, this is not by any means, I mean, to be like, this is the end-all and be-all, this is, this is just how, how we compile the comments that we had today, and I'm certainly expecting more.
Methodologies were outstanding.
Well, and again, you guys did all the heavy looking before I got here, and just bring it, funnel it into a flow map.
I have a question, what you're showing, I don't see that in the handout you gave us tonight.
It actually, the schedule?
Yeah, what you just showed.
The schedule is actually at the, at the very, except for the very last page.
See, it starts on June 5th, though, is what I'm looking at.
Tonight is June 5th.
Pardon?
Tonight, it started with the workshop tonight, and so I didn't, I didn't feel like we had to reiterate what was in tonight, that was on the prior slide, so. So first of all, I just wanted to, I wanted to just touch on this, we've seen this before, this may be something that, there's a couple slides that if you feel like are completed enough tonight, that we could potentially get them to the boards to the state, to the Farmer's Market, even now, even as this is in development, and this is one that I think, the only thing I wanted to point out to you on this one, is the fact that the sustainable resources, we were talking about sustainable finances, and then actually, as we started to dig into the strategies, we realized that it's a little broader than just finances, it is resources. And so, and goals, and so you see these goals before, the thing that, the thing that I want to point out is that under the goals for sustainable resources, we've added two additional goals, one is investment in our employees, and the other one is focus on One is investment in our employees, and the other one is focus on core services first. So, the essential parts of government, public health, safety, welfare. And then, and then once we get, once we've addressed those, with the resources that are left, we focus on the community's priorities. So, that was, so that's what's changed here. Again, I, in the interest of time, we gloss over these real quickly. We have identified strategies in vibrant economy and aggressive business environment related to business recruitment and expansion, and advertising and promotion of Liberty Lake is a great place to do business. In terms of safe, active, and engaged community, the strategies are to provide clean, safe, and secure parks and open space, utilize park facilities to maximize public use and sense of community, communicate, connect, and engage with the public, maintain and expand extensive trail systems to provide connectivity, friendly, active lifestyle, and enrich and enhance intellectual, cultural, and creative opportunities for the late microservices. It's not a fault. One of the things I would encourage you, because I'm not spending a lot of time on this right now. This is not intended to be an exhaustive list. This is what we've gleaned from the notes from all of the workshops and what you put from the staff. And I hope that you take these back and think about it and, and at our next workshop, that you come prepared to share what might be missing from this still. So, under sustainable resources, the strategies are focused on core services first. Implement a refined asset management plan, implement asset management funding strategy, develop financial management plan, and invest in employees as tasks associated therewith. And quality facility infrastructure is really developing capital facilities. Because if we do everything we do in sustainable resources, that's the need of this. And that's, and that's really, that's how we're going to do this and how we're going to implement your vision. And so, I'm going to jump right into the, what I think is important for us to cover tonight, which is really the capital, the capital projects list, making sure we have them pre-set and how we're going to go through the prioritization exercise. So, first of all, it's important, again, I mean, it's undefined because we all have to know what we're talking about. So, as we think about the capital projects list, I want to, I want to focus on that. Capital improvements really focus on their new facilities, their new infrastructure, or their facility upgrade as opposed to asset management, which is putting a plate in for the current facility needs. So, what do I mean by facility upgrade under capital improvements? So, you put a new roof on City Hall, that's asset management. You put an addition on City Hall, that's a capital roof. Also, new equipment, and this is based upon our current policy. New equipment that's less than five thousand dollars and/or has a useful life of less than, well, under five thousand operating life, over five thousand has a useful life of more than one year is actually capital budget value. And that's, that's under our current financial policy. And I point this out because as we look at the list, the capital facilities plan has a lot of things that, it has asset management items as well as capital improvements. It also has things that the city isn't really going to pay for that's really developer-driven, but needs to be reimbursed through the TIP and LIFT. And so, it's important for, the things that are developer-driven, the timing is not within your control. And, and so, nor is it, there is, there is staff effort, but it's not the same level of effort as a city management project. So, so in terms of kind of narrowing down the capital projects list, we gave some thoughts to it. So, first of all, it is derived from the capital facilities priority list. Or we removed projects that were accomplished, that have already been completed or fully funded for this year. We removed all projects to be constructed by the developer or utility providers from the list. We also separated out projects meeting the definition of asset management. So, in your, you're not going to see the list on asset management tonight, but there's a list capital facilities versus asset management. You could go through the same exercise of prioritization with asset management. It's probably not as meaningful, but, but it's certainly something that we could do. And if you ask me to do that tonight, I'd be happy to put together that prioritization matrix. And then we have integrated projects, and I think this is important. So, what happens when you have, an integrated project is something that has significant names and its component, but it also has, but it also has an enhancement of some sort of, like whether it's a safety enhancement or you're adding additional names or additional amenities to it. And when you have an integrated project, it makes sense to use what you have set aside for your asset management dollars and your capital improvement dollars. It's a way to stretch your dollars farther. And so, so if there is an integrated project, like Appleway Payton overlay with median islands to provide protected term movements, that's an integrated project. If it has that, if it has a capital component, we put it together on the capital projects list, if that makes sense. And then, we did add projects that currently are under discussion. So, staff is always listening to, was the council, and to the mayor, the things that are under consideration. We tried to add to the list. I'm not going to say that we got them all, and that's why we're having the conversation on the list. But this is what we came up with.
Lisa?
Yes, sir.
I am sorry, could you back up to the last? Would you explain for my benefit, please, where under your methodology, you're going to remove projects to be constructed by developer or utility provider? And my question is, does that include developer-driven money or projects that will result in a payback by our lift and TIF?
So, here's, so here's my answer to that. We're removing them from strategic plan discussion and prioritization. They still stay in your capital facilities plan, okay? What we're trying to do is we're trying to get at your prioritizing those projects that are within your control. And so, it makes it a lot simpler if you have a very long list, many of which are not being run by the city. So, trying and kind of focus on the things that are within the city's control for purposes of prioritization and for purposes of budgeting and for purposes of the strategic plan. It's not to say that they're not going to be done. It's not to say that we're not going to be involved in them. It's not to say any of those things. It's just that that's going to happen, that's going to happen regardless of the city's actions.
Well, I want to.
I can give you an example. Over on the River District at the intersection of Harvest Parkway and Mission Avenue Roundabout.
Yes.
It's going to be built by the developer. And so, that was the, it's kind of, we're not designing it, we're not going to be building it. They are. So, it's in our capital facilities plan, but it's not something we manage or control. So, we kind of took it out so it wouldn't distract us from our projects.
No, I, I do have a kind of an idea. I guess what concerns me in the back of my head, Lisa, is the fact that if that roundabout's completed, they're going to draw down against the lift and TIF funds that are available. And if we're not even considering that, and we're over here making plans on another capital development project that will also draw down funds, we need to be aware that these funds are being used by another project even though it doesn't appear here in front of us.
That's such a good point. That's such a good point, you're, you're spot on. Managing the TIP and LIFT is kind of a separate activity from just the strategic planning and the budget. But you're right, it's a good point. But you have to be, you have to be cognizant of that even in our budgeting to know what's happening with these other projects. That, that wasn't my point. My point was in doing a head-to-head on what's the priorities. I think that you want to focus on your resources and the things that are within your control in terms of what is strategic for, again, this is the city organization's strategic plan. So, what is strategic for, this is a city. Yes, sir.
I've got a different example. I absolutely love how you're laying this out, communicating the different types of projects. It's just, my, my mind's already going a lot of directions without, which I love this. But regarding projects that we don't have control over, I'm thinking of the sidewalk that we've talked multiple times about, that along the north side of Mission over there. Never really did anything with it. It's going to happen at some point anyways, it's developer-controlled. But a project like that, some of the discussion with the council at different times was, you know, it's under developers' obligation to build that when they actually go develop that or anything. Because we could, we think it's very unsafe, we should go and just build it ourselves. And we could, we could go talk to them and figure it out. It's really their control, it's really nothing that we, you know, that kind of project.
Yes, absolutely. And so, those are the types of projects that you should be adding because you're saying, outside of what we know, the developers' planning, we think that this is a priority for us as a city to take on. So, as you do this, as you, as you go through this process, and this is not like the, we do it today. This is like, this is something that would be a ongoing prioritization over time. Your focus today on what you want to accomplish with this year's budget and the, the several, the next several coming years. But almost annually, I could see the prioritization exercise being revisited with the capital project was because things come up, things change, and priorities change because of that. You don't have just a wall to know what's going to be developed first.
So, maybe in that process, we take a project out of developer control, so everyone put that in our own control, get through that process. Is that right?
Absolutely, absolutely. And at the end of the day, at the end of the day, if it's differently funded, who cares? Because you put the money in, you'll get it out as soon as you have anticipated, to Owen's point. As long as you've anticipated and planned to make certain that the revenues were available for it that year when you were submitting for it. So, open this door on.
That's great, thank you.
So, one of the things that, at Katie's suggestion, we decided to create two separate lists. One for transportation and one for parks, facilities, and other capital projects. And the reason why we did that, frankly, is because it's hard to compare a new transportation project to something that is about quality of life, you know, something in parks, et cetera. And so, I think that we still get where we need to get. And we certainly can combine these all, but it also makes the head-to-heads a little easier for you because that, but this is the list, once we followed that methodology, we took out all of those, what's truly asset management, we took out the developer-driven projects, et cetera, the utility things that are being done by others. And we distilled the list down to Harvard Road widening, Appleway Avenue and Madison Road traffic signal, Country Vista Drive and Legacy Ridge Drive intersection improvements, Harvard Road and Mission intersection improvements, Country Vista Drive and Mission Avenue intersection improvements, and that's the ones at Albertson's specifically, Henry Road overpass, streets, pathway, pedestrian safety improvements, and this is Mission Avenue signage improvements. So, that, I, I'm guessing that because that's, because that has been one that has been identified as one that needs to potentially be ahead of the developer. Country Vista Drive and Henry Road intersection improvements, Appleway improvements, Fairway East City Limits, Country Vista and Appleway intersection improvements. And so, I'm going to stop.
Lisa, not to interrupt, but Harvard Road and I think it's Indiana intersection improvements. It says Harvard Road and Mission. It should say Harvard Road and Indiana.
Okay.
But anyway, not to interrupt you, but I saw some, I couldn't, in our mind, figure, that's the roundabout, so.
Also hearing of Albertson's.
Of Safeway, yeah.
It's the right thing to do, that's why you brought this up.
Don't worry about it, but I just wanted to clarify for council where that was.
And so, the question, the question that I have for all of you is, is what else? Are there projects that you want to remove from here? Are there projects that you want to add to this for, bring forward for prioritization?
I think this is pretty much the whole list we talked about earlier in the meeting. But I think it's.
Is this addressing 2018 or just forward until completed?
This was the list that was on, this is the list that's on.
It's a six-year window.
Thank you.
Yeah, and just for clarification, Harvard Road widening, that's the widening of the bridge, not the maintenance of the deck. So, the widening of the bridge, the traffic signals, intersection that Shane mentioned, Harvard Road and Indiana. So, I think they're all there.
And if you look at your packet, you will see Harvard Road at Ivy Deck as an asset management. So, that is in there also, but it's under asset management. Guys, are we good on this?
Great.
Thank you.
Okay, so then, so then the other list is our capital projects. It's specifically parks and facilities, but we also have another category. So, I messed up something later, but that's okay, I'll figure it out. So, the, the facilities that we have are Trailhead Facility Master Plan. But I think before we even do any capital improvements, have to figure out what the master plan looks like. Public Works Yard and Library Facility Needs Assessment. Again, with the library side of things, before we invest in capital, we have to figure out what it is that's needed and what the community's priorities are. Under Park Improvements, Public Area Circuit Course, River District, River Bend Park Trail.
Quinlan.
Sorry. It's a biggie. Okay, Liberty Lake, Allfields Parking Lot Maintenance Road, Orchard Park Phase Two, which depending upon what you decide coming up, this may go into the budget or remain up. Liberty Creek Elementary North Field Improvements, Rocky Hill Park Community Splash Pad and Spray Park Edition, Rocky Hill Park Parking Expansion and an uphill trail.
And then you had one, another one, remember, the packet of Town Square Master Plan on this one as well.
Oh, yes, Town Square Master Plan also.
Yes, just showing.
I'll just get, yeah, sorry. And also, we have cut off under the other wayfinding signage program, underground utility program, and public park. That's what happens when you try to squeeze too much on.
Let's screen in.
Power plant. So, did, are there other things that you see? Councilmember Moore, you were, you spoke of a community center. That might be, that might be something that, or a senior center, that might be something that you want to.
That might be part of the Town Square Master Plan.
I don't know where it's fallen, but at one point we talked about a citywide lighting master plan, like a trail lighting master plan.
I think that's probably a facilities, just trail lighting master.
And I think that the chief mentioned earlier about the camera surveillance plan. And I think that under safety and security, that we should have a city surveillance camera plan.
That could go under fifty-two.
So, maybe it's an overall safety plan?
Pedestrian safety improvement.
Safety plan? So, whether you're a pedestrian or a park.
Safety and security plan.
I'm going to put that under others.
I think that's one of those core services that you.
Yeah, I think that might be so right.
I don't know, it makes a good point, but I don't know what fifty-two is.
On a separate note, for the Fawn Hero Circuit Course, I know we've had some discussion about the head of government affairs from all they care, recognizing that they do have funds to sponsor these programs. And we had a chance to reach out to them, and if not, we need to send them in. I know that she said that they have funds for these type of programs. So, if we can take advantage of that partnership, it would be a good idea.
This is the beauty thing, too. Once you've identified what your priorities are, it helps staff, limited staff resource, it helps staff focus on what they might leverage. dollars for, grant dollars, et cetera, to, to, to under Moore's point, a senior center. That's something that is something that potentially be funded through community development program, if that's part of a master plan or something like that. But we have to know it's a priority because there's a lot of staff time that goes into, into, you know, the partnerships, building partnerships with funding. But, so, again, everything, at the end of the day, a strategic plan is as much about managing the resources as it is, we have lots of, we have a limited supply of unbelievably great ideas. And the question is, what could be the question?
And how to refund it.
And how to...
Lisa, I would also like to tell you, thank you very much for everything you're doing. I think the list looks really good. I would appreciate, though, at some point that you, doesn't have to be anytime soon, but at one point, we're going to need to know, do any of these that we, any of these presented, are any of them layered, where this would have to be done first before you did that one? So we don't just spend time spinning our wheels, saying, yeah, we want to do number three. Well, wait a minute, you gotta do number forty first.
And I think that, I think that we can take a closer look after we get back your prioritization exercise and talk about some of those things. I think that's a really good point. And some of the things where there's too much, there's too many different competing ideas, clearly that's sort of proposing a master plan or a needs assessment as a way to better define what is at least to be accomplished, as a construct for that that's gonna be under progress. So, we're good. I know that I'm past my time here, so I'm gonna try to really make this wrong. I think that you need to find this to be fairly consistent. This is not really that important. The concept of, I think, public force decision, I've always been thinking of as a head-to-head prioritization exercise. And so what you're doing, this isn't a self-approach in a separate way. I mean, I drop out the ones that are comparing trailhead to trailhead. It's really quite simple, and I have the instructions up in this cell here. You're comparing the green cell, the green row, to the red column. And if the green row is the priority, you put a one in this cell. If the red column is the priority, you put a zero there. And then we go through, we add it up. Now, here's the beauty thing. Please don't leave any blanks. So, you end up doing a head-to-head twice in this, and there's no way not to do that. But if you encounter this one where you're really torn, the way to handle that is to make sure you mark the one as one priority and the other as the other priority. So there is a way where you're really divided, but if you leave it blank, it's gonna tip the scale a little bit.
Nice.
And we'll send this out, I'm gonna send it out to you in an email. I'm gonna ask you that you send it back directly to me. Please don't CC each other because that would be a serial meeting. And we'll compile the results and we'll bring it back to you on the nineteenth for our next workshop. The other thing I want to say is, if you feel like you need more time to take a deeper dive into the strategies or any aspects of this, and you feel like the timeline is rushing you too much, you can always schedule a special workshop. So I don't wanna rush you too much, but I think that if we can get to this, if we get wrapped up and adopted by August, it will be a great tool for you and for Katie and RJ and the mayor in the whole budget process.
It's a great tool. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you all. And last question, last question before I go. Do you feel like the first stages, the, basically, this one and the next one with the goals, would it be helpful to put those on the board so you'd be able to at least speak to at Farmers' Market while we're developing the rest of this?
I think it might be a little too soon.
Yeah, sure.
Yeah, and maybe later, maybe a little in season because the Farmers' Market's open till mid-October. So maybe later in the season, I like that idea a lot. Cool.
I think Farmers' Market, most of the people come in with specific questions, and amazingly enough, they're somewhat the same questions.
And the same people.
Same, yeah.
Do you give them the same answer?
No, I pass a lot of the mic to them because I'm worried.
Mostly giving to me.
Thank you. I'm sorry it took too long.
Thank you.
This person's answer.
That's great.
Okay, where did action I have?
Mayor, move act number, Senator Jenna, one, two, 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 make fifteen, 2018 city council minutes, and approve June fifth, 2018 vouchers, name amount of two hundred eighty thousand, five hundred and thirty-six dollars and fifty-one cents.
Second.
Second, further discussion. I hear you all, say aye.
I...
Who was there?
Mayor, move general business number one, to operate the purchase of a flashcam K80 SX, printer package, camera, and public parking amount of eighty thousand five hundred nineteen dollars and four cents.
Second.
Second, further discussion. I hear you all, say aye.
Aye.
There you go.
Mayor, move number two, to approve office, keen job order in the amount of fifteen thousand eight hundred and forty-two dollars and forty cents for community resources and forces.
Second.
Second, further discussion. I hear you all, say aye.
Aye.
Mayor, move general business number three, to approve a quote from upends a amount of twenty-three thousand four hundred and seventy-six dollars and fifty-six cents for improved AV system in the council chambers.
Second.
Second, discussion. Mr. Turner?
No, I got the next one, sorry.
Oh, yeah. Oh, okay. Need further discussion on this one? I hear you all, say aye.
Aye.
There you go, okay.
Before I do, just wanted to change. Chris, was there specific language in the loving agreement you wanted, or just as far as the amounts and the dates?
Yeah, the dates and the, adjusting the amount from 2000 to whatever comes out every ten months.
Right, right.
Were we adjusting that to eleven months versus a twelve-month time?
Should be.
It should be, should be...
I don't think it says twelve months.
The contract says, it says right now, the contract reads 2000 a month for...
2000 a month or 24,000.
To equal 24,000. Now, it doesn't say long sum. The issue that you have, though, is that the language also provides that the contract terminates at the end of April.
Right.
So you wouldn't, you wouldn't hit 24 at 2000 over the course of that timeframe unless you change the amount.
Yeah, can we leave the monthly amount out and just say to be paid in equally, equal monthly installments between contract start date and the, and date of...
So it'd be 24,000 over eleven months?
Ten months.
Correct. Essentially, that's what it would be. It's about 2182 a month.
So the, and the answer is, they're gonna get $24,000 within the term of the contract.
Yeah, whatever comes out to you.
It'd be 2182 or eleven months.
And then just hypothetically, if the legislative session goes longer, then we would come back and do an extension? Is that what we would do?
I think, I think what I'm making sure is that in the contract, it says through the 2019 legislative session, we talked about, you know, how much would this cost to detail the legislature to be logged during this period of time between now and the legislative session? This is worth a 24,000.
So what we're actually doing is approving a contract tonight for work that's already been done prior to approval.
No, Katie, no. Katie, wanna address that?
No work spent, yeah. So, though they came over to Spokane and meet with all of you, and Jeff came to a meeting last Wednesday, it was very, we straight up had the conversation. He did it on his own dime. He did it to hear the conversation between the senators and Washdott on the projects that we are wanting them to focus on. And he knows that tonight the council will be considering the contract. There, if he's done work, it hasn't been anything that's expected to be compensated for.
So basically, the $24,000 is for the project, you know, starting with approved rule contract tonight and ending when the legislative session is over.
Then eliminate the verbiage of $2,000 a month.
So why don't we, why don't we do this? Why don't we, instead of the, to the date, we can say the end of the legislative session until, okay, that'll cover the date. It'll be from June fifth until the end of the legislative session. And then on the date, what we can do is, we could make it a not-to-exceed contract of $24,000 and just say payable in equal monthly installments, rather than actual amount.
Right. Because that eliminates the number of 2,000.
Right, and just say equal monthly installments.
Right. I'm concerned with that.
Right.
And there's also some verbiage in regards to the report back to the council.
And there is, there is language in that, under the scope of work, the last, under the bullet point, it says provide city councils, school district briefings to communicate progress.
And then we do want to focus on the projects within Liberty Lake.
Right, right.
Because the background gave more than, more of the regional context.
So the scope of work is what we, where we need to take out, see, perhaps, to...
Well, if we're gonna say within Liberty Lake, is the school district different? Because they're gonna participate in it, they'd be interested in, in the Spokane Valley School District boundaries? I think, if I think, you have the fire department, you have the school district, and you have the city, and all their unequal shares. They'll have a little bit different geographical areas and some different geographical needs. And so what the goal was to provide impetus on a complete transportation package, basically I-90 that we've been working on, Harvard, Henry, Barker, and even looking at some of the opportunities for some of these local connector streets. That's what it's about. And that's why their expertise is so beneficial to the school district as well as the fire department. And so I don't necessarily look at this as kind of like, well, we don't want to talk about anything outside our jurisdictional boundary because that's not what, that's not the same jurisdictional boundary that our partners have.
And shouldn't Spokane Valley be asked to chip in?
Well, I think if you look at what they're doing Spokane Valley-wise, they have their own separate lobby that these guys work with or no. What was the name of that thing?
I don't know the name, but Spokane Valley has their own lobby, yes.
They have their own lobby. They exchange information and talk because they're talking to the same people.
We can start off with how many cooks in the kitchen.
Residents of the River District use Barker Road a lot. So I'd hate for us to exclude Barker.
And part of, part of the deal right now, I'm working on, is basically just Harvard Henry Barker, you know, that's funding right now exists for the South Fair Change Commission that's surrounded us, that's, that's South Barker. On the north side, this is where it's getting kind of sticky for Ben, who'd like for his buses and so forth, to be able to utilize that. You know, he brings up a great point. Most of our River District people lease on the West End River District utilizing Barker. And it's in our best interest to make sure that, you know, that is a usable, is...
So Spokane Valley has the workshop, and they have, are doing studies. They hired pairs of peers, and they are looking at the old Barker Road corridor from Mission to Abe. So...
Right. So I mean, it's not like we're, it's, again, we're trying not, the goal is not to try to screw this down to only this particular thing, is to try to make sure that we get the best possible transportation plan and transportation funding out of legislature for all of our streets here locally, you know, internally, as well as all the connections to the freeway.
So kind of to be specific, when Washdott talks about the three projects, Harvard, Henry, and Barker, it's very clear that Barker and Harvard are their, well, are in no order, are their priorities. Henry would be after the fact after the other projects. But clearly, DOT recognizes the safety improvements, the capacity challenges, and then the operational challenges on those three projects. So, not that I'm trying to muddy the water, but clearly, when Jeff came over here and he knew that Spokane Valley has their own lobbyists, his focus in his research was focused on Harvard Road. But, I, you know, I can work with Sean to give us some language that's appropriate.
Yeah. I think that the more that I assess this and consider meetings that we had with the fire department and the school district, that discussion revolved, and their partnership revolved around the entire scope of the projects. I think we'd be doing a disservice to that discussion in getting their partnership to take that, to take that out. So I would consider keeping it based on that. And Hugh's comments, obviously, about our citizens utilizing that area.
Okay, so we'll keep the focus of the effort consistent with the background. Okay.
Further discussion?
So at this time, Mayor, move general business number four, with the modifications discussed, to operate my views in city lobbying agreement, which Jennifer is a clear public prayer to campaign for funding of Harvard Road Bridge and Weston I-8 on ramp projects.
Second, further discussion. I hear you all, say aye.
Aye.
What coming in, letters?
Okay. So we have a lot of, the next council meeting, our two meetings, is gonna be probably just as long as this one. So heads up. We have a presentation. Jennifer Camp is going to present the utility box art effort that's coming out of the Parks and Arts Commission. Friends of Presleyan Park, I U Joe Frank is gonna come and talk about the history and where they are and have a discussion about Friends of Presleyan Park. We're gonna have Chris, or, excuse me, Councilmember Comissis to talk about informational kiosks that she learned about. We have a loader that we will be asking to put a lease on. We have, potentially, we're hopeful that the Centennial Trail Agreement, this is where that $20,000 ask is being made. We're gonna have a public hearing on the adopting the Liberty Lake six-year transportation program. That is something that's required by the RCWs. We had a hearing a year ago in June, and then we adopted in July. So we're required to do that. And if your project's not in there, then we can't get funding for it. So it's critical stat. And then finally, we have increased fees related to building surcharge increases. You haven't heard about this before, but Lisa's gonna mention what the state is doing. And for us, it's a minimal amount, but we have to pass it through to our developers. Like I said, I think it's a few dollars on every permit, and that goes directly to the state. So it's a pass-through. And then I believe RJ is gonna give us an update on the lift. So that will be answering a lot of the big suggestions that Councilwoman Langford had, where we talk about all the projects that this council will be supporting for reimbursement. It's all our projects as well as the development projects. So it's all in one place, and funding, excuse me, funding balances and all that with the report. That is a full line.
All right, so...
Yeah, I have an addition, how it might for us to consider, not necessarily at the next meeting, but within the next few meetings. So you referenced the trailhead. You know, trailhead is obviously something we've discussed at great length over the years. We've had a lot of discussion to spend 1.3 million dollars to do the irrigation. We discussed a lot about what we wanted to protect was 54 acres of green space, so therefore we're moving ahead with 1.3 million. Now we're in the process of trying to decide what are we gonna do with the facility. We've already had some workshops on that. I feel that we are to the point that I strongly support we forward, move forward to retain the professional services that can look at this and look at the facility, look at what could best be done with that. Because I know that we could move ahead as ourself and ask citizens to come in and give us their input. And this could be very direct, limited input of what could be. So because we're gonna be spending a lot of money and moving ahead, I think that it would be wise for us to seriously start considering bringing in professionals to go look at the pros and cons beyond what we might come up with ourself. Because we're really looking at a facility, not just to enhance the golf or enhance the protecting the green space. We're looking at a facility that's gonna be for the next 50, 60 years or so in this, this town. So I think whatever money we will spend there is gonna be well spent and a very good investment.
I guess my thought on that would be that, oh, I would like to see us get through the exercise that Mrs. Estes to do first, because that could be really telling as to where that falls on our priority list.
I agree. That's why I said I think it's necessary to be at this next meeting, but I think it needs to be on our list to get on the list and have a discussion. Because I don't think it's gonna take a lot of our time to discuss, does it make sense to move ahead to get professionals? I don't think we have to get into brain surgery into that. I think we've had, already had enough time and effort to look, to say we are moving ahead. I think the question is, how do we move ahead? I think the question is, how do we move ahead? Do we move ahead at our own pace, with our own knowledge, or do we bring professionals in? So, I think it would be a fairly short discussion.
And then, Mayor, I have to mention Orchard Park, so we'll bring you back Orchard Park Phase Two as well.
Okay, so we're at citizen comments? If there's any citizens left to comment? One thing, we do appreciate comments from the first session, all of them, you know, because sometimes, you know, people are interested in trying to get something done, and we have responsibility to deliver for our community, so, all those are taken to heart. Do you see this? Do that. We have a six or seven of stop signs out back, so I think we're ready to go. I can take it tonight. Two of those. I know, I know, I know, that, that drives us of. All right, I just wanted to be helpful. I got you. You had great comments, ladies, great comments, all the comments were great, so, but then, we're going to move into executive session.
And Katie, how long? Katie? Katie, how long for the executive session?
Um, 10 minutes.
10 minutes, okay.
57. I never know, I wouldn't want to tell.